Thank you all for being here. It's wonderful to see so many people. I really appreciate you coming out tonight. Sorry, I wanted to be in the audience to greet you a little bit, but somebody contacted the news about our meeting first, so I had the pleasure of taking a quick interview. I, let's see, is it six o'clock? It is six o'clock now, so I will call the city council work session to order. Tonight, we really hope to have a broader understanding of kind of the landscape that we're in right now. I think many of you have heard me say about, talk about some of the ordinance that we put in place in the past, and this is an opportunity for us to revisit, to understand what's changed at the state level, how that affects McMinnville, how that affects our ability to do certain things and not do other things. I don't know everything that's going to be presented tonight, but I've asked the department heads that are affected by some of these potential changes to come and do presentations. We blocked out a lot of time, but we don't anticipate using all of that time. We wanted to make sure, though, that we had adequate time for council discussion and for these presentations. I've asked the presenters this evening if they have a long presentation to take some natural breaks and create an opportunity for questions, and then I would ask the council to write down and hold their questions, and then we'll ask those questions after each presentation or at those breaks. And then, if you will, also, please try to keep your questions germane to what that person is presenting and not jump into another topic that may not have been presented on yet. Just assume that your department heads have worked very hard to bring a holistic view for this, you know, challenging conversation that we need to be having. And again, I'll just reinforce that, you know, there are not two sides of this. We all are on the same side. We all want fewer unhoused people on our streets. None of us want to have illegal campsites happening in the city, and it is our shared goal to remedy that, and I think that it's our shared value as well. And so, you know, I think when we are having challenging conversations, I do like to try to approach them from that place and remember that we do share those values and we do share those goals, even though it can be frustrating and difficult at times as we move through these conversations, and especially if there are disagreements on approaches. And so with that, I think that's all I needed to say. And Mr. Lightenberg, I believe you are starting off, and I believe you also have the majority of the presentation, right? I believe so. So you're going to take some pauses in your presentation for questions, and then other presenters will have probably shorter presentations, legal being one of the biggest things we need to learn about around this, especially with a changing landscape. All right. And with that, I will turn it over to you. Thank you. This is our city attorney, David Lightenberg.
Thank you, Mayor. As you pointed out, this is an issue with a lot of facets, but it's also an issue for which we are working within a very particular historical and legal framework, and I'm going to try and show what brought us to this exact moment as clearly as I can. I will be stopping twice for questions, as promised. The city has done some enforcement with regard to camping for a long time. I can trace it specifically back to 1982, where ordinance 4176 established a park curfew. That something existed before that, I couldn't find it, but there has been some enforcement in this area via ordinance since then. In 1999, that was done away with for a set of more specific park rules around enforcement. Once again, this dealt with a park curfew for the most part, but additional behaviors in parks. This is the closest thing through this time that we had to any sort of camping ordinance. In 2018, the passage of ordinance 5057, the city established its first comprehensive anti-camping ordinance. It prohibited camping in or upon any city property. It was a very simple and specific ordinance, and it existed for a very brief time. It established a temporary camping program that still exists in largely the same form. That's the program by which unhoused individuals are able to work with participating private residents who let some camping occur on a privately owned lot or space. Like I mentioned, ordinance 5057 did not last long because the decision from the Ninth Circuit titled Martin v. Boise came down in September of 2018. Martin v. Boise has changed the landscape for the entire Ninth Circuit. That's all the western United States. It came out explicitly saying that you cannot punish for the unavoidable consequences of homelessness when a person has no place to go. It made broad anti-camping ordinances a violation of the Eighth Amendment. While Martin v. Boise changed the landscape, it left the landscape with a lot of questions. Some of those are laid out up there. It wasn't super clear about what exactly are the unavoidable consequences of homelessness. It was unclear about what can be regulated in the right-of-way. It didn't talk about whether structures amount to the unavoidable consequences of homelessness, whether temporary built structures or even tents. It's just silent. One of the biggest things that Martin v. Boise was silent on was the permissibility of time, place, and manner regulations. It does not say whether those should be permitted. However, knowing constitutional law, understanding the framework for which things happen in this, people interpreted this decision to likely allow time, place, and manner regulations. And so did the city. Following the Martin v. Boise decision, the city introduced ordinance 5064. This was in May of 2019, and this ordinance worked to pull back the broad anti-camping ordinance to fit within the city's understood interpretation of Martin v. Boise. So it went a lot further than a simple ban. It added a lot of definitions for what amounted to a camp or camping or camp paraphernalia, and it limited camping in certain areas in this city. These areas, and this explicit language is still in our code. Camping is not prohibited, or camping is prohibited in all park areas. It's prohibited in all public property located within the boundaries of the urban renewal area. It's prohibited on all publicly owned or maintained parking lots, and it is prohibited on all public property located within areas zoned for residential use. Ordinance 5064 also established a time regulation, specifically that there should be no camping or storage anywhere between the areas of 6:30 a.m. and 9:30 p.m. One of the things that is implicit in the Martin v. Boise decision and is implicit in our code's response to it is that if these are the time, place, and manner in which camping is not allowed, those places and times that do not fall here are where camping is allowed. That is what is required of Martin v. Boise, and that is what this ordinance did. The city followed this up in 2021. So 5064 colored the local landscape for a good period of time. It had one minor change in '21. This was mostly passed to deal with vehicles and bicycles, and it did that successfully and separately. The only change that it had to Chapter 8.36 of the municipal code, by the way, 8.36 is where our camping ordinance is located, is that it added a definition for what makes an established campsite. A campsite becomes established at the creation, installation, or placement of camp facilities and/or camp paraphernalia. Following very closely on that, the state moved in this area. Its first big action was HB 3115, which basically didn't change much. It sought to codify Martin v. Boise. Some of those things that were implicit in the Martin decision are made explicit in HB 3115. Specifically, it says that if a city is going to regulate against camping, those regulations must be objectively reasonable as to time, place, and manner restrictions. So while we, many cities assumed that time, place, and manner restrictions would be permissible under Martin, HB 3115 states it. It also points out another one of the implicit ideas in Martin, that reasonableness needs to be determined based on a totality of the circumstances, but that totality includes the impact of the law on persons experiencing homelessness. So once again, this is, this is the sort of logical outcome of the statement in Martin v. Boise, where you cannot broadly prohibit camping. In the same legislative session, we got HB 3124. And you are familiar with the 72-hour rule that surrounds the abatement of campsites. That comes from HB 3124. When a campsite is established, the city must provide 72 hours' notice of its intent to remove the established campsite, and after, only after those 72 hours, may such campsite be abated. It does not go so far as to define established. That remains open for interpretation by cities. This brings us to the current state of our own code, and before I finish with my next two slides, I want to open it up for questions. Does anybody have any questions about the history thus far?
Thanks, and we'll just go down the dais, one end to the other. Counselor Peralta, do you have any questions at this time?
No questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Payne?
No, but I want to say thank you for the detail.
Thank you. Counselor Menke?
No questions, but thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gary?
Yeah, what, 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 what do we currently use as the definition for established?
I will read it for you. Established means the creation, installation, or placement of camp facilities and/or camp paraphernalia. Camp facilities and/or camp paraphernalia are considered to establish a new campsite if moved more than 1,000 feet from the prior location. More or less establishes upon the placing down of possessions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counselor Chenoweth?
I have a couple of questions, and thank you, Zach, for making sure I wasn't the only one asking. You said that Boise decision broadly prohibited camping. There probably is a qualifier we should put on that?
There is, and actually, thank you for bringing that up. I appreciate it. Martin v. Boise did not simply prohibit camping ordinances, anti-camping ordinance. It came with the caveat that you cannot prohibit camping broadly if you do not have available shelter beds. What's interesting about that aspect of the landscape, and I'll get more into exactly what it means to have shelter beds soon, what's interesting about that is that cities everywhere in the Ninth Circuit have not found that to be an attainable goal. So while it contains this caveat, if there are available shelter beds, you can then enforce a broad camping ordinance. It does not appear, based on anything that I've found, that anybody is getting to or even aiming to get to the point where they have sufficient shelter beds to implement a broad camping prohibition.
Okay. And then the second question I have is, can we change the definition of established campsite? For instance, wording from one that I read recently is a campsite that has been in its current location for at least five days. If law enforcement officials do not have evidence about the age of a campsite, law enforcement officials should presume it is an established campsite. Is this language that we can consider here?
That is another good question. Cities have considered different definitions of established. As I mentioned, it doesn't come defined from the state.
Okay.
I know specifically the city of Medford has a definition like that. You may have been even reading from that.
I was quoting Medford.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Medford has taken this tack, has interpreted the definition of established, and has gone a different direction here.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. And council president?
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Chenoweth and Counselor Gary asked both my questions. Thank you.
And Counselor Gary?
And if this is skipping to a later point, that'd be great, but do you have an update on where the Boise case is?
I do. That will be part of the next two.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Please go on.
After Martin v. Boise, there are two cases that significantly color our legal landscape. The first and definitely most important is Blake v. Grants Pass. You may have also heard this under the name Johnson. It has existed under both at this point. In September of 2022, the Ninth Circuit brought this decision, which clarified much of what it means to have access to shelter. Basically, it clarified that if shelters have a certain high barrier for entry, they don't count as accessible shelter beds, thereby allowing broad camping prohibitions. It also added... Yes, I could, and I have a couple. Sorry, give me just a second. I was prepared for that one. A person does not, under the law here, have access to shelter if they cannot access the shelter because of their gender, age, disability, or familial status. A shelter may be of a particular type, and they be of something that doesn't fit the criteria. That does not count as an available shelter bed. If accessing the shelter requires a person to submit themselves to religious teaching or doctrine for which they themselves do not believe, it does not count, it is too high a barrier to count as an available shelter bed. If they cannot access, access the shelter because there's a durational limit they have already exceeded, that doesn't count, and if access to the shelter is prohibited because the person seeking access is under the influence of some substance. The case also broadened a little bit about that statement in Martin where the unavoidable consequences of homelessness. Here, it pointed out that persons who must sleep outside are entitled to take necessary minimal measures to keep themselves warm and dry. As you can see, that is a broad statement, and it does not go a lot further in saying what those minimal measures might be. Again, this has been subject to much speculation and Another thing implicit in Martin and since, but explicit in Blake, is an emphasis on the balancing act in time, place, and manner regulations in this space, that a law that comes in to regulate camping in any sort of way needs to be understood to protect both the safety and welfare of citizens as well as respect the dignity of homeless residents. There is a balancing act to be considered in legislation in this area. As you can see from the timeline, Blake came down in September of '22. Just this last July, the Ninth Circuit denied rehearing en banc. However, just last month, the Supreme Court granted certiorari. The Supreme Court will be hearing it this year. And while I don't know the last two dates for sure, I think it's a fair speculation that they will probably hear oral arguments around April and will have a published decision in June or July of this year. I cannot venture to speculate what that decision will be or what direction it will take us. Something is going to change or be solidified as exactly the And one more that colors our very present moment. Just last month, again, Billado versus Medford was decided by the federal court for the District of Oregon. And what's unique about the Medford case is that in this case, the court found in favor of the city. There are some lessons to be learned from that, although I will emphasize once again, this was by the district court, and it may be appealed. It may turn, end up differently in any number of ways, and will almost definitely have some, be affected by the outcome of the Blake decision coming down soon. However, where we stand at this moment from the city of Medford, the court states the circumstances at place in the city of Medford are determinatively different from past cases in that they preserve times, places, and manners in which homeless residents may humanely rest. The Grants Pass laws were a broad prohibition on homelessness. The Boise laws were a broad prohibition on homelessness. The Medford laws were, I would like to say, like the city of McMinnville's, based on rational time, place, and manner restrictions instead of a broad prohibition. And I'll reiterate what the court said there. I even have it written twice on this slide, that Medford went out of its way to preserve times, places, and manners in which homeless residents may humanely rest. It reiterates the balancing tech, balancing act that we heard in Blake. It distinguishes from Blake where camping was prohibited at all times. Now, Medford has a long list of time, place, and manner regulations. It has done a lot of work in this space, and one of the things that the court was very intent on was that not only has it done appropriate, in the court's eyes, time, place, and manner regulations, but that it has spent billions of dollars, billions, sorry, millions of dollars in working with shelters, working with wraparound services, building locations for homelessness, providing additional services, and really, any number of things. What is one of the most noteworthy things about the Medford decision is the number of paragraphs dedicated to calling out all of the positive and proactive things that Medford has done in this case. They did not stop and say that Medford has met the reasonability test, but that they preserved time, places, and manners for homeless residents, and did so much to make sure that this community was considered and taken care of. It seems that that was a very significant impetus for the direction that the Medford case ended up. With that, my part of the presentation is done, and I would like to open it up for more questions as to our current legal landscape.
Perfect. Thank you. We'll go the other direction this time, except for Counselor Chenoweth is taking a bite. We can come back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. So I want to be clear on something you said to make sure I heard it correctly. A shelter that requires sobriety does not count toward an available bed space, even if it has open space available?
Let me read the bullet point as I've got it written here. A person does not have, does not have access to shelter if accessing the shelter is prohibited because the person seeking access is under the influence of some substance, for example, alcohol or drugs, or because of their past or criminal behavior.
Okay, so yeah, so requiring sobriety doesn't, a place that does that would not qualify as an available bed space?
That's correct.
Okay. Was the Grants Pass decision decided by the same court as the Medford decision?
It was not. The Grants Pass decision is a Ninth Circuit decision. Medford is still one level lower at the Oregon District.
But it didn't go to that level first?
Oregon.
It did. And do we know by chance what that district court had decided for the Grants Pass case? Was it, was, did the Ninth Circuit reverse what was decided at the district court? And to be clear, the reason for my question is if the district court that heard Grants Pass initially sided with Grants Pass and got flipped, and now we've got Medford, the district court has sided with Medford, then the potential for it getting flipped, I think, in my brain, even though you can't, I don't have a crystal ball, but it would seem like there's a better, there's a higher probability we could see that happening.
That is an interesting question, and one that I don't have the research on. I have not read the District of Oregon case. I'm not totally sure that I've seen it. I would be, I would be happy to look into that and let you know whether posture changed.
As we go through the questions, I'll do some quick Google searching and see if I can get that answered.
Yeah, we can do that. My recollection is that the district court struck down the Grants Pass.
Grants Pass.
And Grants Pass appealed to the Ninth Circuit.
And Ninth Circuit.
Circuit upheld the district court decision, but we should get clarity on that.
Perfect. Is there any potential that Grants Pass and Medford could get, and again, I'm, this is a crystal ball question, but the Supreme Court could reach down and say, we need to combine these two cases and pull it up?
I don't know, and I don't think so based on the timeline and posture.
Okay. Just because, the wonderful thing of this is we got another case working its way through the system, right? So what, what we get now, if we've got another one running through the system, hopefully, the Supreme Court says the same thing if it makes it up there, and, you know, or they could, I guess, refuse it, saying, we already decided this. You already know the answer.
Right, and in the same way, the Boise case, they requested, they appealed and requested certiorari and did not receive it back when that came around. So the Supreme Court didn't hear the issue, I bet.
Okay. Last, I didn't hear in your discussions, this, this definition that Medford has for a camping site, did that play at all into the decision? Was there anything in the decision that pointed back that they had defined a camping site in such a way that it opened the door for them to be able to handle things differently?
No. I've read the case a couple of times, and I don't recall it mentioning the five-day delay at all.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gary?
Yeah, can you, can you spell out the, the available beds, sort of decision on, you know, how you, how you understand if there are available beds, if there's a shelter that has 20 or whatever, and you need to make a decision if there's a bed availability? How does that play out, sort of, I guess, on a nightly basis? How is it supposed to and how does it?
I am not totally sure that there is an answer to that question. As I understand it, one of the biggest problems here has been the practicability As I understand it, one of the biggest problems here has been the practicability of that issue. Now, I guess we may be jumping ahead to something, but if Chief Scales, you have an obvious answer to that question, it's very much boots-on-the-ground and practical issue. I don't know how easy that is.
My understanding in some locations is it's a nightly call to see what bed availability might be. So it, it fluctuates based on that, their ability to enforce, yes.
And, sorry, that reminded me, I can actually answer that as far as how Medford does it. They have a police department livability team that monitors bed space on a rolling basis. So that livability team keeps track of this and informs the police officers.
And that was Medford?
Yes.
Okay. And how many beds do we currently have available, regardless of attendance?
I certainly don't, don't know. Does anybody else?
This was going to be my question too, but actually, I didn't, I didn't know those details on the restrictions based on criminality, sobriety, et cetera. So my concern in hearing that is that might mean that we actually have zero available shelter beds until the navigation center opens. I'm, I'm not sure of any other low-barrier shelter that's operating in McMinnville currently. Please correct me if I'm wrong, but Gospel Rescue Mission, I don't know, maybe, maybe what the, maybe, maybe what First Baptist Church has been doing as a subrecipient would qualify as a low-barrier shelter?
Yes, it probably would.
But that, so that would, and then, I don't know how many beds that is.
Cold nights, the nights that are cold nights.
The warming shelters.
The warming shelters are considered low-barrier.
Yeah, Mayor, so if I may, we have, we have a low-barrier shelter available during seasonality relative to weather. Both the Gospel Rescue Mission does that, and also our churches open up for that as well. It's not year-round, in my understanding from the court cases, because they're not year-round, that they don't qualify under that assessment. In terms of the total number of beds that we have in McMinnville, we have a, a shelter cooperative that works together. I'm not sure what the total number of beds are, because each of them define shelter and beds in a different way. And I think we would have to find out what the court case definitions are in terms of what qualifies and doesn't relative to that.
Okay, Counselor Chenoweth?
I was just going to ask our attorney, can we get a follow-up to the, the understanding of our community development director? Sorry, I have to think about the title, because I still want to say something else, regarding whether those beds have to be open year-round, as to whether they qualify on a given day?
I would be happy to discuss the specifics of the available beds, the community offerings as far as those spaces, and whether we think that they work toward this. I'd be happy to.
Thank you. Counselor Mankey.
Okay, I want to get a little bit deeper into what Medford has done, because I had, couldn't help but think as you were describing, all of the ways that they have worked towards helping people that are homeless, that perhaps, maybe they do have the shelter beds pretty much covered, and that might be part of the reason why they've been given a little less
There, there's a lot that Medford has done proactively. The court specifically says that the city has spent years attempting to address its housing crisis through a broad range of interventions aimed at structural, financial, and policy changes. I have a bit of a list, would you like to? Okay. I will be as specific as I can. They authorized construction of a tiny house transitional housing campground on city property. They specified a low-barrier tent campground area and approved installation of 30 hard-shelled duplex units within it. They purchased properties for a navigation center with wraparound services that includes or will include another low-barrier shelter. They have flexibility for severe weather events. They have the police department livability team that I mentioned earlier. They have spent an estimated $19.5 million for homeless services toward a number of shelters over the course of three years leading up to the case, and had grant funding to at least two more and to, to Operation Turnkey program as well.
So that sounds pretty significant to me for a fairly small town.
Yes.
I'm just thinking in terms of other cities that have done that kind of outreach, like Eugene, I think, and Springfield may, area maybe too, but that's definitely would provide a pretty broad shelter base for most people.
Yes, and it seems clear from reading this decision that those significant efforts played significantly into the fact that this case was determined in Medford's favor.
Yeah, that's kind of what I thought. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I just, I remember a couple of years ago when we were discussing this and the community livability team, and I remember we watched a great YouTube video about it. They have a, they've partnered, and I think it's a county partnership, sending out a behavioral health specialist with responding officers. Do you remember this, the, the video that I'm talking about? Anyways, it's a, it's a, it's a good video on YouTube, and I think you Googled that, the community, Medford Community Livability Team. Counselor Payne?
Thank you. I respect a lot of what Medford has done. They, their code is, there's a lot of weeds in here, but it's very specific and very detailed. My question is really, what's the, um, there's a lot of these items that are listed, so one of the items I'm looking at for Medford is offensive littering, and I would dare say that McDaniel Lane has a lot of offensive littering. So if a lot of these code violations result in some citation or misdemeanor, how does that help anybody if, and I don't know who the question, maybe it's rhetorical at this point, but if it's, if it's the unhoused population, well, anybody, where are their funds coming from to pay this citation? I mean, what's, what's the solution to have a code that can be violated and then essentially an unenforceable consequence?
I think if we are going to get into the specifics of enforcement, policy, and consequences, we'll get more details later on when the municipal court presents.
Anything else?
Just let me also note, for context, I think the current population of Medford's around 85,000 people.
Thank you. Counselor, oh, Counselor Mankey?
I just make a comment, so that, they would definitely be receiving federal funding. Okay, so not nearly as small a city as we are, but still.
But they'd be over the 50,000 population, so they're receiving, they're receiving funding, okay.
Development grants.
Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. Can people hear me okay?
Yes, thank you. I mean, you weren't asking me.
Thank you for the analysis. I had a couple of questions about the balancing act in our city's code relative to Medford's, and in addition, where we're at in terms of service levels. So when you compare, setting aside the available services, when you compare city code to city code, do you find the city code that we have to be roughly defensible along the same lines in terms of placing reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions that allow people to humanely camp in enough locations that, at least, holding aside the separate question of whether we have sufficient shelter and so on, is that part of the code? Do you feel sound? Because that was definitely part of our intent, was to comply with both the state law and the Ninth Circuit decision in crafting these ordinances.
Yes, I do, and I would like to point out that as far as it is my job to make that analysis and recommend to you whether it goes too far or whether it could go farther, that question is so hard to answer in the current legal landscape. I, I could point out to you the most conservative approaches here. Everything else is going to exist on an unknowable spectrum until we hear more from the courts.
Sure. Okay, so, but insofar as the framework that we have, that at least appears solid.
Yes, I think that the city has clearly designated time, place, and manner rules, and like I said, while it doesn't make it explicit, the implicit idea behind outlawing camping at certain places and certain times is that it is allowed in other places at other times.
Okay. Now, the biggest risk factor, notwithstanding the fact that we have these time, place, and manner restrictions in terms of enforcement, currently, would you say that that's the lack of available low-barrier shelter? Understanding that it might be available at times during inclement weather, and perhaps there's more enforcement available during really cold weather, although I'm not sure how much enforcement happens during bad weather events, but, but generally speaking, is that one of the bigger risk factors, is the current lack of, of low-barrier shelter?
That's a hard question to answer. Just based on the way that the cases are written, that doesn't factor into the sliding scale here. Just based on the way the cases are written, if there are available shelter beds, you can enforce a camping ordinance. However, time, place, and manner restrictions are not under that same caveat.
Got it.
Now, in the city of Medford's example, despite the fact that those things are written as separate things in current case law, the judge there gave a lot of positive accolades to all these shelter beds and indicated that this is possibly part of the calculus where we consider that the city has considered its houseless population here.
Okay, a different question then, but related. How do the current state laws related to homelessness impact this, and maybe this is a question for the chief, impact the ability to enforce certain kinds of conduct-related
I can get into the conduct if you're, the, a conduct within a camp that's regulated, it's, doesn't have, I think it's a completely separate issue from what the camping, the prohibited camping might be. So if there's criminal activity, now, I will back that up, and I will say, ballot measure 110 has allowed a portion of public use of narcotics, not possession, but the use to be legal as it currently stands with ballot measure 110. That's not to be confused with the prohibited camping. So the behaviors can be, and should be, people can be held accountable. That is a completely separate issue, I hope. Answer your question?
It does. I'm just a little confused, because I, I, I understand that the legal framework requires us to have low-barrier shelter in, in order to enforce, I think, some of the conduct things that we, like alcohol, for example, consumption in a, in a, in a, in a campsite, for example. And I understand that, that there are limitations, not just from measure 110, but just conduct related to just living in a campsite, that we have, that we have a harder time regulating, I guess, now.
You'd be correct, so with the junk accumulation, that sort of stuff, that does happen. I have written a little extensively in some of my, my weekly updates to the council is that that is a little bit, that is not a little bit, that's really hard to pinpoint who exactly is responsible for the mass amount of garbage that is set aside at these campsites when you've got dozens of people, in some cases, living within that specific area. So yes, that can make it more difficult to identify and then hold accountable, yes.
Okay, thank you, and I feel like I've taken up a lot of questions on, on this round, but I do have one other one. Among the biggest complaints people have that I hear in public are RV camping in different places around public streets. And my question is, what's the status of enforcement on RVs, given that we have no lawful place for RVs to park?
I don't have an answer for that. Are we going to get to that later? Then, I'm just going to ask that that question come a little bit later. We're going to address some of that as we go on.
Thank you. No more questions?
Thank you, Council President.
No questions at this time, thank you.
And Counselor Chenoweth, do you have a follow-up?
I have a couple. On, on the 72-hour notice, and this is kind of following up where I thought Sal might have been going, but he didn't really go this direction, so I'm going to hit it, is there, my understanding is there's an off-ramp, so to speak, on that 72-hour notice requirement in that it says, "Unless we believe or have reason to believe there's illegal behavior occurring within the campsite. In that case, we don't have to wait the 72 hours." Am I understanding that correctly?
There are a couple caveats to that law along that line, that's correct.
Is there, what's the other one?
I think imminent danger, and I don't have it in front of me, but I feel like there were two or three.
Is it, is it imminent danger to include, um, public health, et cetera?
I believe so. I know I've got this near here, but...
Do you have it in front of you, Counselor? In your papers?
I might in my paperwork, but I don't know, honestly. I don't know. I read through this stuff, and so what I'm remembering versus what I know is sitting here, I don't know. I might, and I'll go back and look after I go off of this.
Would there be an appropriate time for us to come back on the 72-hour law in your presentations, if, if it's, to find that?
I've got it right here.
Okay.
Oh, you got it?
Yep. The 72-hour notice requirement does not apply when there are grounds for law enforcement officials to believe that illegal activities other than camping are occurring at an established camping site. In the event of an exceptional emergency at an established camping site, including but not limited to possible site contamination by hazardous materials, a public health emergency, or other immediate danger to human life or safety.
Perfect, okay. And then the other question I had, I've, I've heard a lot, and I don't want to, I don't want to get down the measure 110 debate. I, I'm glad people are working to undo it, but I've heard a lot of pointing to measure 110 as preventing us from doing things regarding the homeless community. I don't remember us doing a lot of enforcement on drugs in the homeless community prior to measure 110, and we're certainly not doing a lot of it now because of measure 110. Am I remembering, I mean, I do, did not see it as often openly done on Third Street, but in terms of the actual, if I drove by the homeless community, I knew they were doing drugs down there before measure 110. So not all of them, I don't want to broad brush, brush by any means, that's, and don't want to be misunderstood to do that, but it, it just seems to me we're putting an awful lot of emphasis on measure 110 that may not belong there. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, I can answer that. In fact, I communicated with the News Register, like, earlier this week, I know that there's been a couple stories that sort of commingled the topic of 110 and prohibited camping, and I, I said, I, I think they're completely separate issues. I think 110 has a niche within prohibited camping, but it is, they're not, they're not, they're not, they're not together, and I don't think they affect one another necessarily.
Counselor Geary?
On the 72-hour, 72-hour caveats or off-ramps, as they were put, is it, not, this isn't the expectation that you would have these off the top of your head, but maybe for, to be brought back, are an analysis of attempts to engage in those and, and, I guess, failed attempts at engaging in those? attempts at engaging in those. So, what have people, what have people done in that and been, and been sort of overridden on? When, when have those been attempted to be, was the 72-hour note, the period been attempted to be circumvented by one of those caveats and that attempt has failed? And why?
I am totally unaware of any court decision on that. We recently consulted on whether establishing a campsite in a road would meet this. My determination in that instance was that it does, that it counts as immediate danger to human life or safety, and therefore did not fit the 72-hour prohibition and could be abated immediately.
That's, that's your, that's your-
That was my analysis. That has not been vetted by the courts.
Okay.
Any additional questions from counsel at this time? Counsel President, give you a second to unmute if you desire. Okay. Well then, being prompted by the screen here, I think we're going to our Public Works Superintendent, David Renshaw. And thank you, Mr. Lightenberg, for your presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Your Honor, and everybody hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. With the purpose of my presentation is just to give you a quick snapshot of some of the issues that are faced operations. And as I thought to put this, this deal together, you know, I, I kind of focus on, on what's changed, what's, what's different. Because I've done this work for the better part of 40 years, and stuff in the right-of-way, negative behaviors, vandalism, that's not new stuff. But what's changed pretty dramatically is the frequency and the intensity. Frequency in terms of volume and type of material, intensity in the, in the intensity of damage, and quite honestly, intensity of, of interactions. So, so there's been a change. Something's changed in the nature of, of how we do our business. Next slide, David. So this slide talks a little bit about some of the issues and stats related to park, park operations. This is a photograph of one of the shelters at East War- East Warman Park. This shelter was actually rebuilt in the early 2000s. A key stat here to note that since 2018, we call it daily park services, which are really the core of what we do, folks going into our park system, cleaning up restrooms, cleaning up litter, dealing with graffiti, those sorts of things. The hours that we expend on that element of what we do have gone up over 72 percent, better than, than an FTE. So obviously, that has an impact on our ability to do other park work. And one of the things that we've observed in our, our collecting data is that we're now averaging about one to two behavior-related issues per day over the last six months. And it can be a wide variety of things, and certainly not are all related to, to homeless groups. But it was an interesting stat to me, because that's just a staggering difference for what it, what it used to be. Literally every day, we're dealing with an issue. Today, restrooms were closed at West Warman Park because of suspected drug use. That's a, that's a weekly event for us. So, so as I said, that it's, it's the intensity and frequency of things that have changed. One of the tools that we've, we've adopted is we now manage a security contract, which is a first for me, and it's been a fairly effective program. What it does is we bring a security, a contracted security contractor into our park system, basically from night, our, night at night to 5:00 PM, and that varies seasonally as daylight savings time. And what they do is they patrol all, all of our restrooms, they make sure that, that they're locked appropriately, and they make sure that they're empty, and that folks are not inside of them and spending the night. The positive part of that is that it, it's made life much simpler for our round staff, our park services staff, simply because there's less surprises in the morning. You've manifested. That's about $117,000 a year contract, is what that service costs us. And it isn't foolproof. One of the gaps in that is it's, right now, it's only an evening security program. There is no daytime coverage to address behavior issues in the parks, specifically in restrooms during the daytime hours. With that, with the new contract, we will have some daytime support in the summertime that will, to board some assistance programs, but it's definitely a gap in the service. And we see impacts there. Need my glasses here? We do, we do both contracted cleanup efforts where we pay contractors to come in sites, and of course, we do our own staff does a lot of that work as well. We typically apply a contractor to larger-scale efforts, either, either larger in terms of volume, sometimes where stuff's located, can be, particularly in the park system, some of that, those camps can be pretty remote, and it can be all-day show to get stuff carried out of my hand. We estimate we'll spend on figures of about $30,000 this, this year, and that continues to go up. And I think one of the things that I wanted to say, and I want to be honest about this, is the results are temporary. I can't look you in the eye and say that this is an effective program, because we can come in, we can remove the debris, and unhappily, we'll wind up back in the same situation. Not instantly, it kind of depends on, on, on location. But I think it's important, you know, I, I want our efforts to have effects, be effective, I think is the word I'm looking for, and sadly, I don't think this is having an effect. I, I think it's, it's, it's a momentary effect, and that's good, and certainly this stuff needs to get, get removed. But what can be difficult is that the longevity of the effort is pretty short. Next slide, David. This slide depicts a couple issues. One of the things that I don't think we've had the opportunity to talk about very much is the impact on accessibility. When we see issues like this where, where sidewalk's actually blocked, that's a potential accessibility issue. Folks in, in wheelchairs are, are sight impaired. Obviously, there's situations like this, there's, there's mitigation efforts that have to go to clean those things. Interesting enough, what happens often in these efforts is when, when we interact with folks to move stuff, it can be a fairly negative interaction, because they're, they're not necessarily amenable to moving the things in a timeframe to open, to open the right-of-way up. So that creates a level of, of stress on the staff, and, and again, it's not a very effective way to do it. Just like in parks, we have, we have cleanup removal contracts. It's a little more complicated in, in this situation, because we have to coordinate, sometimes with other agencies, we still have to coordinate with the police department to do our work, and we have to coordinate with contractors. All of those efforts take time and money away from where our primary mission is. So if, if we're doing cleanup on Marsh Lane, there, there's elements where we have to, we have to coordinate with water and light staff, we have to coordinate with the PD so they can come in and, and do their work, we have to coordinate with, with our contract. And so all of that, again, is simply pulling our attention away from the main thing. And again, I would say we're looking to spend it on that side of the house upwards of $40,000. And again, the results are temporary at best. It's, it's, it's a moment in time solution. And then the final slide, David. And this one deals mostly with environmental concerns, a little broader picture, picture thing that, again, I don't think that we've done a great job focusing, bringing your attention to, is, some of these issues have, or either are having or going to have effects on, on the environment. You know, obviously, when, when camps are set up in natural areas or riparian areas, there can be damage. We'll see digging, we'll see human waste, we'll, we'll see things driven into trees. Obviously, those activities are gonna impact water quality. And then, of course, the, the slide there on the, or lower left, it doesn't do a great job depicting it, but we have biohazards. That, that particular slide is showing needles in it. You can see them, your eyes are better than mine, but they're there. So, that's just a quick snapshot, and I think one of the things I want to focus on is that we, what I tell our staff is we're gonna focus on behaviors, not, not, our job is to simply, just simply fix it one more time than it got messed up. That's just becoming more difficult. Let's only take any questions you all might have.
All right, thank you so much. Before I hand this out to the counsel, I, I didn't ask this earlier, but your, your, your photograph certainly reinforce it. I'm wondering, Mr. Lightenberg, if, if you could go back and maybe expand on site contamination in regards to the 72-hour law? Would, and, and how does that intersect with dangerous drugs, garbage, needles, feces, et cetera? Or Chief, please?
Well, I can talk to the public health piece of it, because throughout, everybody's seen what the encampments end up looking like, and during the course of our time, the 72-hours understanding that there could be site contamination or public health issues, myself and our staff have reached out to Yamhill County Public Health expressly asking them to go pay visits to these sites to determine, make a determination if there is a public health hazard. Excuse me, and they, they have indicated that's not something that they have the ability or capacity or the personnel to do. So that has, we have looked at that, but to your point, if we go to the county public health route to go out and take a, a look, that's just something that Director Manfred said that they cannot and won't offer.
So, and if I'm correct, we actually asked to have a state of emergency declared around public health because of these areas?
I don't know if I'd use state of emergency, but it was definitely site contamination with respect to public health safety issues that we were seeing within the encampments up on Marsh or wherever they might be.
Okay.
Asked for specifically if they had somebody that could go out there and make that determination, and they didn't.
Okay, just to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying, law enforcement can't determine site determination, we need public health to come in and declare site contamination in order to have an effect on how we're able to enforce from a legal standpoint. Is that correct?
From the public health standpoint, we felt that the public health department would be best suited to do that research and then that determination, yes, not law enforcement.
Okay. Counselor Chinawith, you have a follow-up?
I'd love a follow-up on that. Is, and this may go to Jeff, rather than to anybody else. Is there a reason why the city can't be tasked to be the ones responsible for determining if, if that section that reads "possible site contamination by hazardous materials" has been met? I mean, why, why, I guess, I don't understand why, I understand why the police department may not be a good place for that. That makes sense to me. But I don't know why we are thinking that the only people who can do that on our, for us is Yamhill County. Why can't we go out and make a determination using some other portion, whether it's Public Works or whoever, to evaluate and determine whether that site has reached a level of feces and drug contamination that it is qualified as being contaminated with hazardous material?
So, we don't have that staff capacity, we don't have public health experts, we don't have hazardous materials experts on staff. The question was really, I thought specifically around the public health issue. We, we haven't actually explored the idea of the, the larger issue of environmental contamination. We have an-
Contamination by hazardous materials, I think, would qualify as both of those. And, and I, I just, I just think maybe this is something we should consider exploring, because I, I think it, it can't take much to get certified or have the knowledge to be able to look at an environment and say, yes, this is possible site contamination by hazardous materials, and in which case, we now have a vehicle by which we can move forward past the 72-hour notice. I mean, there are times, just to be frank, there are times where you drive down McDaniel Lane with your windows down, and there is absolutely no doubt in anybody's mind that there is a contamination by hazardous materials on the ground out there. So I just think we ought to be able to do that somehow.
We could explore that.
Well, and I, I think, to me, this reemphasizes our partnership with the county and the importance of the partnership with the county. And, you know, as we continue, I am assuming at some point, somebody's presenting or talking about our MOU with the county? Is that coming up today at all, or no? If not, I just, I, I think that, you know, leaning into existing systems as opposed to standing up new systems is a logical step forward. We do have, I mean, our public health department is a few blocks away. But, Counselor?
100% agree with you, Mayor. However, I also would not want, you know, one of the, one of the philosophies I live by is I can't change anybody else, I can only change myself. And if we can't get the assistance of the county to do that, and it's, seems like a fairly simple thing to do, rather than having our ability to handle these situations limited by that whatever reason that Lindsay is, Lindsay Manfred is choosing not to support us, and I don't know what her motivations are, I'm not casting aspersions.
Let, let's, let's refrain from-
Yeah, I'm not casting aspersions at all.
Individuals.
Well, that was mentioned over here, I'm just repeating the same name that was said. So, for whatever reason that they're choosing not to, we should, if, rather than waiting for them to do so, I would think we should take it upon ourselves to do what we need to do to fix our city.
Thank you, Counselor. So, I just want counsel to know that I'm attempting to keep a list of follow-ups, which I'm sure staff is doing the same. And so, you know, this, to me, this, actually, this part of the conversation kind of underlines the good reason for this listening session of kind of peeling back some of the layers of this onion, and so, we'll, we'll continue with that conversation. And I'm gonna go around to the whole council for follow-ups from Mr. Renshaw or on this conversation. Counselor Geary?
So, just tailing on this conversation, the concern on making or not making a qualified or not qualified informed determination of hazardous is if we, if we cite that and start abating or, or initiating and circumventing the 72-hours, that, that is, that is the basis of that legal decision if we were to get challenged.
That's exactly right. As I mentioned earlier, it's hard to describe the spectrum on which some of these things might fall, but I can point out that the conservative approach here would be making a very sure and supportable decision that something is hazardous in order to go into it. And I will reiterate, I can only tell you that that's the most conservative approach.
Okay. Question for Mr. Renshaw? The, I guess, it's sort of a clarifying question that what I read in your slides is what you are telling me for the answer, and that is, the question being is, what's the impact to our normal parks service for addressing this, this suite of issues and those tangentially related? So everything that you have to do that isn't, everything the parks maintenance and public works crews that have to do that isn't public works and parks maintenance? And, and I heard it in a different, few different ways. It's, I guess, 30 to 40, 30, $70,000 in contracted work on right-of-way and other public works abatement issues, and, and then some, some figures about one to two times a day, or for sure, one time a week, closing a bathroom. Do you have any more numbers to quantify how much time we're spending not on public works and parks maintenance?
I don't specifically, you know, certainly, it's, it's numbers we could get you. I, I think what I was trying to do is, is to create a flavor for you of what the impacts are. I mean, obviously, one of the important numbers that's in that first slide is the 72% change.
Mm-hmm.
Where you had an activity, because the park system hasn't grown by 72%, right? Community hasn't grown by 72%, but it's one narrow piece, what we do, the most important thing we do in parks, in park maintenance, quite frankly, is park services, because that's what people see.
Mm-hmm.
Clean restrooms, lack of graffiti, litter patrol, it's, it's like cleaning up your front porch, right? Well, that work has gone up 72%, 72%, but the areas that it's happening in hasn't gone up 72%. Tells me something, right? Something's changed. So in terms of, you know, things that, I mean, there's a variety of things that don't get done, right? We certainly have, have been blessed with some additional resources and additional staffing that's helped in that regard, but the reality is that, that this is, this is blunting our efforts to do things that we would typically prefer to be doing, and are quite honestly, more system-oriented, whether it's irrigation repairs, or building repairs, or tree pruning, or tree fertilizing, or shrub pruning. or shrub pruning, or prepping ball fields, or all the things that you would associate with park maintenance work. Now, the reality is to be clear so everyone understands that this is park maintenance work. These things happen in a park system. It's part of it. Like I said at the beginning of my statement, I've looked at this for 40 years, right? Just the level is different. This isn't new. I mean, people have been messing up parks forever since they were parks. I mean, the fact of the matter is, we build facilities, whether they're parks or streets, for people to use. Unfortunately, sometimes that leads to misuse. That's just life. It's just the way things work out. So, I'm not so much worried about that. It's just the, you know, it's the intensity and the frequency. And my kind of off-the-cuff remark about we just have to fix it one more time than someone breaks it, it doesn't work anymore, sir. It doesn't work. The frequency and the intensity is so dramatic now that strategy doesn't work. So, I don't know if that answers your question.
It helps. I think, yeah.
And we can certainly round up some data on specific hours that we're spending on these sorts of things. But I would, I don't want to just throw numbers out without having-
I think, I think that does help me, and it would kind of push us to the, a question of, at what value is it to sacrifice the standard parks maintenance stuff that we see versus these, as you say, sort of temporary measures that it's going to reoccur versus the laundry list of everyday parks maintenance things that we need to be doing to keep our parks working, to keep up with that increase in demand, I think. And I think that's helpful. Yeah, thank you.
As a continuation of that, before I go back to you, Counselor Chenoweth, one of the goals council set this year was to start collecting the data around how the city spends efforts, whether that's money or dollars. And maybe our city manager could address this a little bit in terms of, as you start to build out that plan for every department and understanding that each department is unique and won't collect the same type of data, what are some of the things, and maybe, you know, specific to this kind of data question that's coming up right now, what are the types of data points that you're going to be collecting this year for council?
You'll actually hear some of those further in the presentation as some of the other departments and programs make reports. You're going to see examples of that kind of data tonight.
Okay. You have a follow-up, Counselor Geary?
Not to that, but just one other one on parks. What is our park zoning, or what are those parks zoned as?
Are you asking me?
I'll throw that out to the board.
I mow them. I don't talk to what they're zoned.
Could be a good time to transition it over to me. Our parks are actually zoned, what the neighboring zoning is zoned, so we don't have a specific park zone in McMinnville.
Okay. I'm going to go to, I'm going to go through the whole council for questions for David before we move on. So, I'm just going to go back. And do you have a continuation on this, Counselor Mankey, or did you have a different question?
I just have a request. Please talk into your microphones.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So, Counselor Chenoweth, do you have any follow-up questions at this time for Mr. Renshaw?
No, I just really have a statement. I do realize that a lot of times, you guys, Park and Rec and the Police Department are the ones that take the brunt of all this, and thank you. Thank you for the work you're doing. Tell you guys, thank you, and ladies, for the work they're doing.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Counselor Peralta?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'd just like to also echo my appreciation for your work. It's often thankless, but I'm out and about all day, and I see your people doing great work around the city, so I appreciate it. One comment that I wanted to pass on to David, I just was, you know, in light of Counselor Chenoweth's suggestions about emergency health orders, I was kind of going through the statute, and I just encourage you to look at ORS 431.133, which restricts the authority to issue and enforce emergency health orders to public health authorities, which we are not, according to the statute. So, that might limit the ability to pursue that option, but I'd encourage you to include that in your research. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Payne.
My first question is, does McMinnville, does this code have a right-of-way restriction?
Which, which code?
The camping code, the camping ordinance.
Camping ordinance itself does not, no. Separately, we don't allow obstruction to roads.
Okay. And then, I was going to come just to add on to Counselor Peralta's comment is, there's a lot of information on OSHA and responding to, yeah, biohazard potential, bloodborne pathogens, especially when you're talking about needles and things that can be transferred through bodily fluids.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Mankey?
I don't think I have any questions right now.
Thank you. Council President Garvin?
No questions, just appreciate David Renshaw's team and all the work they do that isn't typical of their job description a few years ago. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Madam, I do have one follow-up to-
Counselor?
Sal's statement. One thing I would like to know, the reference he said is to public health emergencies. The actual wording in HB 3124 is such as possible site contamination by hazardous material. Is that requiring a public health emergency declaration in order to make that evaluation? And I would, I would want clarity on that.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. And Director Muir, I think we're going to go to you next. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Counselors. I'm Susan Muir, the Parks and Recreation Director. We partner a lot with David Renshaw and his team, obviously, in the outdoor spaces. So, I'm going to cover a little bit on the indoor spaces in Parks and Recreation, which are the three buildings, the Community Center, the Aquatic Center, and the Senior Center. Much like you've already heard, we focus on behaviors when we look at things that happen in our facilities, not people or types of people, or where people may lay their head, as long as they follow the rules. And that's, that's where we really focus our attention. You may recall, on June 1 of 2023, we prohibited large vehicles in the park parking lots. That was because there was an issue of safety and also travel ways and overusing the parking spots that were there for the park visitors. We've had some difficulty in communicating that, mostly with larger vehicles that are not related to camping and/or are not currently being camped in, and making sure that everybody knows that we apply the rules consistently. And again, it's the type of vehicle that we're really looking at, not necessarily how it gets used. We are often one of the public restrooms that gets accessed by our community that doesn't have access to clean and safe restrooms. And again, we welcome our community into our facilities to use them, as long as they're following the rules. We have had some issues at the Aquatic Center due to the visibility of the front restrooms, and have had to close those, referencing the restrooms that are right outside the door in the park that are available to people. We have experienced a recent uptick, but overall, we generally do experience some tent and camping around our buildings. We've addressed that through ad packages and other tools to build fencing around the blind corners and the areas that are sort of off the beaten path. The back area of the Senior Center was being targeted for a while for camping, and even folks prying into some of the storage facilities that we have, so we have since fenced that in. Same with the area around the Aquatic Center, and then the stairwells around the Community Center. We do have issues with trash and recycle pickup. A lot of times, folks we've noticed who camp like to use those types of objects to secure space in alleys and/or in staircases. So, occasionally, we've had to forego a trash service because the trash receptables have been chained together and stacked in a certain area, and we haven't been able to catch them in time before the trash company comes. Let's see. We do have to be careful, much like the Public Works staff, in terms of approaching these types of things. And we're always appreciative of our public safety partners when we need them. But we do generally make sure we always have two people that get pulled away from their normal recreation programming, either inside the building or other places, to go address something outdoors around our facilities. We've added a few cameras when we noticed some of the hose bibs were being pried open around some of our buildings, and we've turned off all of our exterior outlets to eliminate the use when the parks are closed for any types of usage in that regard. And then, just generally, we've noticed an uptick, much like the parks, in garbage and shopping carts and other paraphernalia bicycles around the buildings and our parking lots. I do want to say, we have also offered a safe overnight camping spot behind one of our facilities that went well. We partnered with a nonprofit in town, and from what I know, it was barely detectable. It was something that was used frequently as, for a car camper. And we did not have any issues with that as a facility, or in terms of any impacts noticeable to the patrons of the facility. So, that's the story from the Parks and Recreation programs, and most importantly, our indoor facilities, and how we look at this issue through those lenses.
Right. Thank you. And start on my right with Counselor Mankey.
Susan, would you have any clear idea, or even kind of a ballpark of what it's cost you with the additional fencing and the different, additional procedures you've had to do to make sure stuff didn't occur and the extra staffing?
Not off the top of my head, but again, I could pull that data for you, for sure.
I'd really like to know.
Mm-hmm. Will do. Thank you, Counselor Payne.
Nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Peralta?
Thank you. David, does the lack of access to restrooms infringe on the city's ability to enforce codes against waste in campsites, either under Martin v. Boise or under state law?
That unfortunately is a really interesting question. There's speculation that this is one of those unavoidable consequences of homelessness, the need for usable restroom. But that is just speculation that has not been called out in case law that I've seen.
Thank you. No other questions.
Thank you. Counselor Chenoweth? No, no problem.
Got a bad back, so I'm using the wall. No questions, other than to say the same thing I just said to David. Tell your crew thank you for all you guys are doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Geary?
My questions have been asked. Thank you.
Thank you. And Council President?
Susan or David, one thing we hear on council about is the trail area down in the Joe Dancer Park and Tice Park and behaviors in both of those areas. Could you speak to kind of staff simplicity and how much more time that takes to keep up those areas than it has historically in years previous?
Well, I'll go first, Susan. It affects things, you know, we have a specific schedule where the staff will walk those trails, both at Dancer and Airport Park, and Tice Park, those sorts of things. And it kind of rolls into that park services idea where, five years ago, it might take X amount of time to do that. Now, today, it takes Y, and Y is, it's not exponentially different, but it's significantly different. You know, we'll have such, and I'll, I'll give a recent example. At an issue of, gosh, I'm going to say, two or three weeks ago, Tice Park, one of our staff members is doing his walk-through, comes across a camper, gentleman declines to leave, and of course, in a park, you have to leave immediately. And it wound up being a three-hour escapade trying to get this gentleman out. Well, it's three hours that that staff person couldn't do his regular routine. He wound up staying over, and still wasn't able to get through what we needed to get through that day, right? So, that's just one tiny example of how it affects our workload. I don't know if that helps at all, sir, but that's just-
Yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Oh, from a parks perspective and programming recreation, I will say, you know, we look at it as kind of a three-pronged approach with park maintenance, public safety, and then park programming. And what we've done is try to get more diverse programs out in our parks, in more diverse types of parks. So, for instance, in summer fun, we do a walking group, and we'll take them, ask people to meet us at a park, so we can, if people do, are not familiar with our trails, and they want to see the trails with other people, or just have that safety in numbers, we will do programs like that throughout the summer to try and get people, people on the trails. Because one thing we know is, the more we program our spaces, and the more that helps lift behaviors.
Thank you. So, we're- Thank you. Does any Counselor have any follow-up from any presentation thus far right now? Okay, we're about an hour and a half in. We're going to take a five-minute break, let everybody use the restroom, get a drink of water, and we will resume promptly at 7:30. Thanks so much. Thanks so much.
Recording stopped.
Mr. Towery, who, who would you like to go to next?
Library Director Berg is next.
One second. What's that?
Library Director Berg is next.
Okay, and before we hand you the reins here, I have a follow-up from Councilor Chenoweth.
And I, I just asked it, and I'm not sure who I'm supposed to get, who this best goes to, but in terms of these decisions, when I read through like the Boise decision, it seems pretty clear to me that it's addressing sleeping and sleeping bags or tents. How do RVs fit into any of these decisions?
That's a good question. As far as Martin v Boise, they don't. Boise specifically calls out sleeping and doesn't get very specific about what that means. It's not until you get to Grants Pass where that's broadened. Grants Pass says that certain things that allow you to sleep warm and dry are also, like you can't take that away from people. And Grants Pass goes so far as to say, sleeping in a vehicle amounts to that. Now, what exactly sleeping in a vehicle means, right, again, we're dealing with a spectrum, right? You can, you can see the, the latency of that spectrum when you talk about RVs. Does this mean that somebody is subject, is automatically allowed to camp and by parking an RV, you have an established campsite that requires 72 hours of abatement? The, the most obvious, the most careful answer is yes, because Grants Pass says that people are allowed to stay warm and dry in camping, and that includes being in a vehicle. However, there's some discussion to be had about whether you can peel off RVs from this. It's hard to say. There's, you would be acting in a more risky way. You would be opening your, the city up for liability, but we could certainly look into dealing with RVs differently than other vehicles.
All right. Thank you. Library Director Berg.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. This was a challenging presentation from a, specifically thinking about camping. People don't, the library's open during the day. People don't come in and set up a tent in the library during the day. I can make certain assumptions based on some behaviors, but I think that what you've heard from the various department heads already are similar to the issues that we face at the library. I chose to take, and, and, and at some point in time, that would be a great conversation to have, but I didn't feel like that was, this was not, this was not the time for me to air those grievances maybe. Instead, I wanted to focus on the things that the library does do to, to serve all of the public. The public library is open to everyone, but specifically services that I think would be useful and accessible to those that are campers. And so looking at the offer of internet and wireless access, there's no doubt in my mind that some of people that are, that are the campers that we're referring to do come into the library to use that service. We have a device charging station. One other thing, we, we are a warming and cooling shelter, and I will say that that was something I kind of put forth when there was talk about warming and cooling shelters, and my thought was, we're a public library, we're open, and we have heating and cooling. So by default, we are a warming and cooling shelter in the sense that, yes, come in while the library is open and you can, you know, sit there and utilize our HVAC system. That did, that, that ended up bringing up some more challenging situations during our recent ice storm where in other situations, we may have chosen to close, but we did not because we are the only warming shelter that is open during the day in McMinnville. So I felt that it was, we would've, we would've, you know, literally left people out in the cold in, in below freezing weather. We are, we get heavy use of our public bathrooms, certainly some of that use is by people who are regularly camping. And then we do offer vehicular camping as well. We have, we have offered three sites. They're not, they are not being used. They are not lower, low barrier sites. We do offer toiletry kits, and then also just, we do some partnerships with Give A Little Foundation and Encompass Yamhill Valley, just in terms of trying to make sure that people are engaged in services as much as possible.
Thank you. I, I noticed your kind of hesitation around language, and I think language is something that's so important, and we struggle with it so much at times, especially when we're trying not to paint broad brushstrokes, as Councilor Chenoweth said, and, and I think camping is such a difficult word in that because of course, you know, we want camping to be something that we're doing recreationally. And so I, I know that often in the spaces I'm in, talking about these, we, we refer to the community as unhoused community, which is the language I, I, I choose to use. And I don't know if that's a benefit to anybody in the room at all, but it doesn't hurt to, to, to call it out.
And I think where my struggle was, is that we were particularly, thinking about the RV issues and the camping issues, and I didn't necessarily want to open a can of worms in terms of, yes, unhoused, and what are the, what are the situations that we're faced with because of being a public space, a, a space that is warm and dry, where unhoused can come to stay and be. And like I said, I was, I was taking this upon myself as, yes, there are issues there, but those aren't, those are ones that you've heard of already. You know that, what you've already heard from other department heads, and of course, you see it just in your daily lives. And that could be its own conversation as, as, you know, as could be the case with almost any of the department's heads, I would say.
Yeah, thank you. I know, and the chief called this out as well. It's so, so difficult not to conflate conversations, right? And, and we are trying to keep this focused, so thank you, and thanks for your added definition and clarity on that. Going to the council, I believe we're back to you, Councilor Chenoweth, as the lead question asker. If I have that out of order, I apologize to others on the dais.
But once again, I have no questions. Just tell your crew thank you for all they do. You could start in the middle, though.
Thank you.
I did that in the last round. Councilor Gary?
I see you structured your slide as one tool, toolkit of services that you offer and provide. My question comes from the other toolkit. Can you talk to me a little bit about how the exclusion program is or isn't utilized and how it is or isn't working through the library?
Yes, so we have created a behavior response committee. There are now four members of library staff that are on the behavior response committee. We meet weekly to look over, we also have a internal spreadsheet where, where staff is, documents all variety of issues from some very, you know, relatively minor thing of somebody smoking where they shouldn't be smoking to something much more egregious behavior-wise. And so we, we talk about that as a, as a small group to discuss what should be done based on our patron code of conduct. So based on the behavior, do we just, and, and staff also, just general staff has the ability to do this at the time of the situation, at the time of the behavior. A lot of times, it's somebody leaving in an angry or aggressive manner, and staff may not feel comfortable doing that, so we, having that in, interaction at that time. So we talk about it, and then based on a patron code of conduct, decide what we need to do in terms of, is it just having a conversation with that person, just sort of, hey, that's not, that's not an okay behavior, not an okay thing to say, up to the point of leave for the day, leave for the week, leave for the month, leave for three months. And we have gone up to a year in terms of excluding people based on behaviors. And, and oftentimes, it's for continued behaviors that, behaviors that are reoccurring. Whether those people have homes or not, I don't know.
Right.
Sometimes.
Okay. Thank you. And all, given my relationship to the staff or certain members of staff, I'll refrain from passing my kudos along, but, and I won't want to cloud the waters by saying that I know certain members of your staff have really appreciated your leadership through all these issues.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Menke.
Well, I'll ask you too. You probably have, I would assume perhaps additional staffing, maybe it's been necessary and the time you spend just meeting in your group before and discussing how the behaviors and then taking care of them. What would you say your increased costs are?
I, I could figure out some of those costs based on, for instance, we recently had to do some repairs to our elevator room and eventually figured out that it was because somebody was trying to tap into the electricity from outside the building. So, so things like that, we do have the ability to say, really track those costs. But then really, the, the behavior response committee and the toll it takes on staff morale, that's a little harder to quantify.
How long, how long have you had the behavioral response committed, just out of curiosity?
I think about a year.
I, I know we talked about this a while back, and I thought it was interesting, some of the procedures you were doing.
It has, in some ways, it's worked. We still see the same issues, but we feel less like, what do we do? We don't know what to do, sort of thing. We have, we at least.
You have a certain certainty about how you're gonna handle it.
We can manage them a little bit better, yeah. And, and in a way, manage ourselves a little bit better.
Well, it's greatly appreciated that you've taken on the warming shelters and the cooling shelters during the day. That's, that's a nice thing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Before we go to Councilor Payne, I have this sneaking suspicion that this question about data regarding money and time is probably going to be broadly applicable here, and I just want to remind the council that we set a goal in January specifically to start identifying the relevant and tracking relevant data that is necessary in, in order for us to be, inform our service delivery. So we're asking for that now, but just in January, we gave that as a specific goal that the city staff will be carrying out through their work this year. So where, you know, some of our departments, we know that this is already baked in, if you will. For instance, our police department collects high volumes of highly specific data, whereas other departments wouldn't have had a, a, I don't want to say there wasn't a reason, but wouldn't have had the direction to start separately or to start, to start gathering that data in a hyper-specific way. And that was a decision we made collectively in January as a policy decision that staff going forward will begin that data collection process. And so how that will play out in each department will be a little bit different, but just in terms of setting that expectation, that, that I want to make sure we all are on the same page, that we've given that direction, and that, that more specific data will also continue to be coming back to us now.
I think everybody understands that. I, I'm merely asking for an off-the-cuff if they might have it. I realize that no one's been asked to do this up to this point. It's just kind of a, I don't think a lot of people realize how much this costs the city too, and I, I just am kind of trying to emphasize that.
Yes, absolutely. I, and my comments are also, just so the public knows, that that's the specific direction that we've also given, so that we're not coming to you and saying, well, we don't know, we don't know. We're, we're setting ourselves up to be able to come back and say exactly this many dollars and this many hours, et cetera. Councilor Payne? And Councilor Peralta?
No questions, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, and Council President.
Thank you. Thank you for your report. Director Berg, a few years ago, I think as part of the pandemic, we had met one-on-one and you talked about the drain or the, the resource allocation that took to maintain your public restroom down in the downstairs lobby and some of the behaviors that it had and the impact it had on staff. Is that still going on today, or has that been rectified through different processes and systems?
It is still going on today. It still is a, you know, we've got two public restrooms for the entire library, which is most likely not enough for the numbers that we serve, and then also the, that people are coming in just for that service. And it, yes, it still takes its toll and, and takes some time.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that all? Council President?
Yes, for right now. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Where would you like to go next, Mr. City Manager?
Community Development.
All right. Thank you. Community Development Director Richards.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I'm gonna talk to you tonight about the resources and partnerships that we have at the city relative to helping build shelter and bed capacity, which has been some of the dialogue tonight relative to the camping. So in 2016, the city established the Affordable Housing Committee. This is a committee that meets monthly and is staffed by the Community Development Department. For the first several years of that committee meeting, we also established a subcommittee called the Housing the Homeless Subcommittee. Through our role as a city, what we felt we could do is convene partners. We don't build housing. We don't actually have funding resources that we get on an annual basis. So to put it in perspective, the city of Medford, because of its size as a city, receives annual funds from the federal government, both for community development block grant funds that they can use towards helping their houseless population, but they also receive home funds, which is specific to building shelter for homeless. We don't have access to those resources because we are not of the same size. That's based on size. So the city, the funding for these types of programs coming into Yamhill County, come through the county and also our Community Action Partnership, YCAP. We felt as a city, what we could do is bring the partners together and have discussions about how, how do we all work? about how do we all work together to try to resolve some of these issues. So we saw ourselves as a convenia. We also saw ourselves as the, the other thing we could offer is reaching out to other communities to see what they're doing, what's working, what's not working. We had long conversations with Medford, actually, and Eugene as well. If you remember, we brought the city of Eugene into a city council meeting to talk about what was working and not working for them. And then also to raise awareness of our needs at the state level. We support our partners' projects as much as we can. And the role that the city can play is removing regulatory barriers. So we worked really hard to remove barriers that are in our development code that could be prevent, prevention of building this type of shelter and housing and capacity. We also looked at financial relief for projects. So we implemented an SDC and permit fee relief program that has served both the habitat for humanitarian community home builders well, in terms of their subdivision build-outs. And then we also have enabling authority, so we can put together regulations that enable programs. So in the city of McMinnville, we actually do not allow camping as a land use on private property here. So we do not have the opportunity to set up campsites through our zoning on private property as sort of a land use classification. The discussion we've had tonight is really focused on the public right of way. But we did talk a lot about how can we enable some camping to occur on private property? And that's when we started visiting with other cities about what they were doing for sort of these discreet camping programs. And that was our overnight safe car camping program. Next slide. The Housing for Homeless Subcommittee brought together all the partners throughout the county that works in McMinnville, and they looked at the data. And at that time, the data showed that we had large populations of homeless in our youth demographics for senior women. Senior women were being displaced out of their housing due to our rising housing costs, and they were on fixed incomes and could not afford it. And we also had a rise in vehicular homeless. So we, senior women, were going to vehicular homelessness, as well as others and veterans. So we established subcommittees that put together work plans, and the goal was to reduce the amount of people that were unsheltered in those different demographics. Through that process, we worked on building, had a lot of discussion about the need for a youth day center that provided an opportunity for homeless, used to gather and access resources that has since been built, just recently. In terms of the senior woman discussion, we had, we met with a lot of different churches to find if we could match senior women who were experiencing homelessness with special service providers that would, that would take them under the wing and help them. And we looked at tiny home projects on these church properties and able to do that. We weren't able to bring any of those to fruition, but it really raised awareness for us in terms of that need. The vehicular homeless, we did set up the overnight safe car camping program. And then the veterans, we worked with our housing authority and reached out to our state agencies, and we were able to double the number of housing vouchers for veterans experiencing homelessness in McMinnville. Next slide. I talked a little about the senior women, and one of the things that came out of that was we were trying to, this was back in 2017, 18, and 19, and we were seeing the emergence of these sort of tiny home initiatives throughout the state, housing people who were houseless. And so we tried to create a partnership between Blanchett Farm, which is a program in Yamhill County, our school district, and some nonprofits in town to see if we could build a tiny home project here where we could house the senior woman. We weren't successful in that endeavor. However, what we did do is we worked with the school district and their ESA program. They worked with our building officials and our inspectors, and they have developed plan sets for homes that are assessable and tiny homes that could be built here in McMinnville and placed on property for those experiencing houselessness that had mobility issues as well. And those plan sets have been approved through a plan review process, too. So that, if anyone's interested, those plan sets still exist. Next slide. There's been a lot of discussion about, can we find a campsite for, for those who are experiencing homelessness here in McMinnville, so there's a place for people to gather? We had a lot of discussions with other cities about that. And what we learned through that process was that those types of campsites, if not managed and structured, become unsafe situations for both the people camping there, as well as the first responders. And so you've seen since that time, the state has come out with some regulatory authority that allows cities to, if they're going to move forward with those types of campsite programs, put together a program, put together a program to ensure some management and structure there for safety. And so prior to that, we were, we were in discussion with other cities who had done it and had not had success because those types of structures did not exist. But at the same time, we did do a search of property within the city of McMinnville. We looked at all the city properties, we looked at all the county-owned properties, and we went to all the nonprofits who had property as well and visited with them about, are there opportunities to look at these sites for camping or for any type of project to help house our homeless population? Through that process, again, we were not successful because we weren't able to find a site or a partner for that, but we have gone through that work. Next slide. Where we did have success in terms of being able to put people in safe situations that were experiencing homelessness in discreet ways around the community, so what we learned was, from some of the other cities, was the long, large congregate of campers was create, was where you would create this sort of unmanaged situation. If you could find discreet ways to provide safe places for people to camp and park, that you would, that you would see success with that. So we set up the overnight safe car camping program. We were one of the first cities to do that. It's now enabled in state law to do that. We modeled ours after the city of Eugene, and it exists here in McMinnville. So we don't have a registry for it. People can participate. They need to follow the, they need to follow the code in terms of how they participate by providing sanitation facilities and place for storage for people who are using the safe car camping program. And it's, it's on a complaint basis. If we get complaints, we go out and look at the site to make sure that those things are being provided and there isn't behavioral problems. And I can tell you, we have not had any complaints that I'm aware of, I don't know, Chief, if you have, for that program. And I'm aware of several different properties throughout the city that have been participating in it for many years, and we have many properties coming in and out of that program as well. So it's, if you don't know that it's happening, that's good, because that's the intention of it, but it is providing a place for people to camp. And I don't know, David, if that would be considered capacity as well, that type of program? Next slide. So we worked through the regulatory pieces of it, and then we started having a lot of discussion about how do we support our partners in terms of the work they're doing? That's where the work's happening. That's where the resources are. So how can the city help them in terms of creating the outcomes? And we could do it in a couple of ways, in terms of removing regulatory barriers that we talked about, but also being an advocate for funds. So we don't get regular annual funding for these services, but there's a way for us to get out and pound the streets and ask for money. And we've been doing that in the last couple of years to help our partners move their projects forward. Some of those examples are, we have expanded our emergency shelter beds in terms of capacity by adding 110 beds since 2016. That's what I'm aware of. We've done so by working with YCAP for their project, Turnkey Project, which was the conversion of a motel into a managed emergency shelter. There's about 45 units associated with that at this point in time. And then the navigation center, we're working on that right now in partnership with YCAP. The city is the one that secured the funds for the navigation center. We were the ones who worked with Representative Noble to get a special allocation for that and bring it into the city. We also went after other funds to make sure we had enough funds to build it. We reached out to YCAP to partner as an operator for that. And our staff is the staff that's managing the construction of the project. So the city has dedicated staff to manage that project and the construction of it. And we should see that be, hopefully, a ribbon cut on that project here in late May, and that's adding 35 beds that are in a low barrier situation. It's also adding a day center for people to go in terms of accessing resources, and it's providing a space for a one-stop shop for access to services, such as medical services, employment services, food bank, things of that nature. I think that's one of the successful projects that's referenced in the Medford decision. And then we also worked with the Gospel Rescue Mission on their expansion. So they have added a second building to their campus, which has doubled their year-round shelter that they have there. And they recently just added a commercial kitchen as well, so that they could expand their food services, too. When that was first brought into the community, there was a lot of concern about impact of that shelter in terms of the surrounding neighborhood. We had a, part of that land use decision was that they needed to report to us every year whether or not there were any concerns or complaints. We needed to file that report as the planning department, whether there was any concerns or complaints. We have not received any in the time that they have been in operation.
Next slide.
Then we have also worked on expanding very low-income housing. So subsidized housing comes in a variety of different forms, and it's easier to build subsidized housing for the higher end of the market that needs subsidized housing, because logistically, less subsidy needs to go into that, right? We didn't have a lot of subsidized housing for the very low-income households, which are usually households that are experiencing houselessness. So we work with Yamhill County on social relief facilities. We've added 225 housing units since 2016. Some of them are in our development process right now, so they haven't opened up, but they are entitled and moving towards development. We've worked with Yamhill County, who has this very unique private-public partnership program that they do with developers to build social relief facilities of typically 12 to 16 units. The private developer operates at, Yamhill County is a tenant of it, and they put their clients in there. We have worked with Stratus Village. We approached the housing authority and said, there's a, there's a large need for very low-income housing here. We will support you and help you in any way we can, so that we can bring that project online. Would you be willing to partner with us and take the leap of faith and really move into a much larger project than they have done previously, and make McMinnville the next priority for that project? And out of that discussion was born Stratus Village. We helped them find a site for that. And that's the largest affordable housing project in Yamhill County, and that will be 175 units, and that's currently in plan review for construction. And then we're working with Operation Generation. Operation Generation is a local project here in the downtown area, and that's looking at cohousing generations. So senior residents with single parents and kids, in terms of bringing them together and so that they can work together on needs and supportive services. That will provide 23 to 27 housing units as that's moving forward. Next slide. So that's, that is the culmination of what we've been doing in the Community Development Department in terms of working towards trying to provide shelter for our houseless population, both emergency shelter and transitional housing.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll start with Counselor Peralta.
No questions yet, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Payne?
No questions. Thank you.
Counselor Mankey?
No questions, but thank you, Heather.
Thank you. And Counselor President?
I do have one comment. I'm impressed by the few number of slides for the CDC.
Two meetings in a row.
Counsel President, anything from you, sir?
No questions. Just thank you to Heather and your team for all the outside-the-box ideas you've brought to council for policy consideration the last few years.
Thank you so much. And Counselor Geary?
All right. I think it's time to go to Muni Court. Our court services supervisor, Mr. Carvajal, would you like to take us off here?
Yes. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and council. Thank you, community members, for joining tonight. I just wanted to give a brief overview of what the court handles weekly regarding some of the cases that come out of some of these issues that the city is having. My main statistic to point out to tonight is the prohibited camping citation. So in 2022-
You speak into your mic, sir.
Oh, yeah. Sorry. In 2022, as the slide shows, we had 45 citations for prohibited camping. And in 2023, we had that go up exponentially to 151 citations, giving us a 235% increase in prohibited camping. Another case type that kind of mirrors a lot of the same circumstances is criminal trespassing. So we had a very small increase in that, but it's still a substantial amount of cases. So the court has four sessions a month. So the court is, every Wednesday, we hold court. We have two traffic days, and we have two criminal misdemeanor days. We do not have maybe the capacity to handle all these cases when we only have the two court days for that. So we're looking at other ways to address that in the near future. I will be asking city council for a couple more court days to take care of some traffic stuff, so we can focus on criminal misdemeanor cases for the city of McMinnville. The, the main thing that we're trying to do going forward is, we really want to talk about community courts and what other cities are doing that have these problems, and focusing on different programs. I know that Counselor Payne asked a question about how can we squeeze any fines out of a homeless person who doesn't have any money to pay? So that's a legitimate question, that we're trying to find other creative ways of sentencing and things to do that we can kind of move forward with some of this stuff. Next slide. So a big question that the court gets a lot of times on this prohibited camping matter is what the stance is. What do we do? So this is a breakdown on this slide of what our current approach is through the city prosecutor's office. So the city prosecutor, if it's your first prohibited camping citation, you are given a violation. That then is given the opportunity for that case to be dismissed if you follow the terms given by the city prosecutor. That's typically an outreach program, going to one of our partners, getting a mental health intake or getting a substance abuse intake and evaluation. So that usually takes care of some of those folks who are new to the system, it's their first time in. But as many of you know, these are repeat offenders, and these are people who are habitual. And I tease sometimes that I know the date of births of a lot of these people, because I enter them so many times into our system. So it's not something that I take lightly, but I just know that I'm very familiar with a lot of these folks because of just the amount of time that we see them. These, other thing that the court has to stress is, these cases are not short cases. This isn't your traffic ticket where you come in, you see the judge, you pay your traffic ticket, you go home. This is one where we're asking you to come back after you've done your evaluation. A lot of times, what happens is in between the time that they're cited and the time that they come back to court, a lot of these folks have gotten other citations, been incarcerated for other reasons, have fallen off of the face of McMinnville Earth and come back, you know, six months later. There's a lot of things that come into this, where the court's holding on to a lot of case types and a lot of cases for a long time, that is very difficult for a small staff like mine. So we have those stresses, trying to kind of get through all of these types of cases. So if you go down the line, the second one is a little bit of a more stern approach. Their case can get reduced to a violation still, but their case cannot be dismissed. So it'll go on their criminal record if they follow the terms given by the city prosecutor. So a lot of times, this is another case type that we'll see that might not come back for a little while, but these are repeat offenders. These are things that, whether it's not another prohibited camping, it might be a criminal trespass, it might be a disorderly conduct charge, it might be some of the stuff that we've been seeing on Third Street. So that's another concern, just the amount of recidivism and just repeat offenses going on with these types. And then as you go down, the third prohibited camping, which, to be quite honest, the third one might be the first time we see that person, because they've been given three within the time that they come to court. So we have a lot of, the other problem that I wanted to kind of highlight was, when folks don't come to court, it's not just a strain on the McMinnville Municipal Court. So when someone doesn't show up to court, Judge Poole signs a warrant for failure to appear. That failure to appear then gets handled by my staff, which then gets sent to PD Records, which PD Records has an enormous task load as it is. So then the PD Records has to then process warrants, then the PD enforces arrests, and then those arrests sometimes are lodged on a warrant hold by the Yamhill County Jail, which I don't want to keep saying I have problems, but I have a hard time getting into the Yamhill County Jail. I don't have accessibility to be there every day. They have limited services for us. So even though every department that is having this case and handling this case, it eventually will end up at the jail with me not being able to see that person, which allows that person to get released after 36 hours, which starts- person to get released after 36 hours, which starts the ball and the cycle rolling all over again. So then that means the court will cite them to a new date. That person may or may not show up to court. If it's the latter, then that means an FTA warrant is signed and that means the PD is back enforcing. And so we're in the same cycle, kind of running on this hamster wheel. So, and so I know I'm kind of burying you in details here, but the third prohibited camping is what we see a lot of times with our Class A misdemeanors. So it's 12 months of being put on bench probation, typically a one-day stay in jail, a fine. That 12-month bench probation is not a very high success rate on completing probation because typically there's another violation within that time or some form. I mean, I don't want to paint it such a bad picture, but a lot of them, we have some success cases and success rates in this thing because we have great partners that help us out, White Cabin, Provoking Hope specifically, that is able to provide services. And I'll talk a little bit about Provoking Hope in this slide. Provoking Hope is in our courtroom every single day that we have court, and they are the, really the pillar of our court partners. They have always been dependable. They send some great people down here. Judge Poole has made a special connection with Provoking Hope in the sense that they really started focusing on our court around the same time that Judge Poole and I were both brought into McMinnville. I'm only two years as the court supervisor and Judge is just a little bit behind me on that. And so Provoking Hope was our first real partner that was able to be here every week. Judge Poole will point out folks in court and say, they're standing there and they'll say, defendant, turn around. You see Donna or Kyle, raise your hand because they're the people that are going to help you. And they make that contact and they're able to start with rehabilitation services right out of the gate. And so my, mine and Judge Poole's vision on these things with the court is that if we do meet with City Council to request two additional court days to handle the traffic days, and we take traffic out of those Wednesdays and we can just focus solely on misdemeanor crimes in McMinnville, and with two of those days having a real focus on Community Restoration Court, which the city of Eugene Municipal Court and a couple of other larger courts in Oregon have had great success with that, that is finding ways to get away from the traditional fines and sanctions that are usually accustomed with some of these misdemeanor crimes and really get rehabilitative services offered to these folks. I know that that is what our plan is. This picture in that top right-hand corner, which is a little bit hard to see, that's Judge Poole. He came up with a, an honor for some of our partners. This is our first one, so Provoking Hope is our inaugural partner. It's called Friends of the Court. So I know we're not anywhere near the Supreme Court of the United States, but the Supreme Court of the United States does something called Friend of the Court. And so the Friend of the Court is someone who is a non-party to cases being heard by the Supreme Court who have volunteered. They get a special designation as Friend of the Court. So Provoking Hope is a friend of the McMinnville Municipal Court. Judge Poole had a presentation over there the other day and honored Kyle Johansson with our first award. Judge also joked that since he's the first, he's can be the BFF of the court. So he's our, our best friend, apparently. So we're just trying to reach out. I know that we have a great community who's very concerned. I hear a lot of questions, a lot from citizens about what we're doing. I try to remind people that the court is just the venue. The court is the place that these things happen. We're not the City Prosecutor's Office. We're not the judge. We're not Yamhill County Jail. We're not the PD. We are the venue where these things happen. And so we don't have total control over a lot of this stuff. But I tell my staff every day that we are to be compassionate to folks. We're trying to show empathy to these folks with the idea that we are still part of the court system and that there's going to be some hard days in there. And it's 100% better to be in our shoes than on the other side of that glass or that window when we're dealing with some of this stuff. So I'll take any questions if there are any.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Geary. We'll start with you.
Just a technical one first. On one of those slides, you had DEZ. I'm not familiar.
I didn't address that. I'm sorry. Okay. So the DEZ ordinance, Downtown Exclusionary Zone Ordinance.
Okay.
We have had some success working specifically with Captain Fessler, Brent Galloway, trying to figure out if on probationary terms, if the downtown exclusionary zone for Third Street is effective. A lot of, if you do have a Third Street business or you're a patron of Third Street, you might see the same folks down there. And so that is a good tool for Judge Poole to have at his discretion and the City Prosecutor's Office to have at their discretion to be able to alleviate some of the stress on Third Street.
Okay. Familiar, not cool enough to use the DEZ term frequently. I guess, can you maybe give a little update and analysis on the effectiveness of that program and maybe how that works hand-in-hand with or dovetails with your guys, your folks' effort?
Well, I think it's maybe a mixed bag. I mean, we have had a couple of people who we've been able to apply the downtown exclusionary zone ordinance to. It's like when you had smoking sections in a restaurant, just because you were in the smoking section, it didn't mean that the nonsmoker section didn't get some of that smoke over there. Those folks still find their way over there. And so even though you can't have patrol 24/7 finding anytime someone's walking down Third Street. So it's a good tool. It's a good, maybe the success rate of it isn't as high as we'd like, but it is a good tool. The other problem is also is, once the case is over and they go to a jail term, that probation ends and so the DEZ component falls off. So it's, I would say, in my estimation, it's a, it's a good ordinance and it's a good tactic to try to keep some of these problems away, but it's not foolproof, obviously.
Any comment?
I would concur with Jason. I think it's a, it's a tool. I think our officers have found it successful when we've got the continual problems downtown with people that are, that have been sanctioned, told not to be down because of whatever behavioral issue they've got, or there's a theft issue, what it might be. But there's been some success and I think that's attributed to the fact that we've worked pretty well with the court to set up a system that holds people accountable and keeps our, our downtown insulated to some, to some degree.
Have there been any legal challenges to those DEZs in the state of Oregon? Do other people use those? To how do they use them?
Yeah. So there was early 90s, we had this, actually, let me walk that back. Early 2000s, we instituted a downtown exclusion zone, exclusion zone. Courts appealed that. They were sort of overturned because they were pre-adjudication of the case, people being excluded prior to the case being heard and adjudicated, where we've set that up. We retooled it a number of, five, probably five, six years ago where it's a post-conviction sanction that, and, and we have found it to be successful and holds up to muster. Yeah, we're good.
Very good.
If I could add one piece to that, part of the problem also with any of these things where law enforcement is citing and lodging people in Yamhill County Jail, the Yamhill County Jail and the McMinnville Municipal Court had meetings where we needed to find access to the jail to arraign people. And we're only given three days access to the jail. Wednesdays is for Judge Poole to go into jail with the City Prosecutor and hear cases. So we actually bring the case and we bring offers and adjudicate or dismiss or whatever the case is going to be, how that's going to be handled. But the other two days that we're allowed in there is Mondays and Fridays, and it's at a very specific hour. It's at 3:00 PM. So at 1500 hours, we're able to go into the jail. Now, because of, when someone's arrested and lodged, they have 36 hours to get before a judge for arraignment. And if you can't do that in 36 hours, they have to be released. So if the timing is wrong and I'm not able to get into the jail within those 36 hours for whatever reason, because it, if they're arrested on Monday morning, by the time Wednesday afternoon comes around, 36 hours has passed and we're not able to do that. Even on the days that I am able to go in there, because I'm not a member of the Oregon State Board and I'm not an attorney, I'm not able to practice law in the, in the jail. So I have to take some sort of electronic device to have Judge Poole virtually appear in front of this person. So the logistics of us arraigning all these folks on a regular time scale and being able to get, I, I guess my point is, I don't want the PD or anybody from the city of McMinnville thinking that because law enforcement is lodging and they're not being held, it's not because we're not trying. It's, a, a big hurdle is the logistics of us trying to make a new arrangement with the county and getting in there more often and being able to find more, maybe technology being able to help us with virtual appearances like we used to when I first started here in McMinnville. So there are a lot of hurdles and we're trying to work through those, but I just want to give you a broad scope of kind of why we're not necessarily holding a lot of folks some of the time.
Do you mind expanding on that a little bit? I, I know that during, at the start of the pandemic, the jail shut down and wasn't accessible. I don't know to what degree, but I know that it was severely restricted. But we are all existing in this, what we call a post-pandemic world. And so I'm not quite sure, I, I don't understand the restriction of, of jail access. Perhaps you could enlighten me?
And I believe it's because of pandemic policies in the sense that everyone is going through staffing issues. And so Yamhill County Jail no longer, there's a machine right over where Counselor Chenoweth is sitting. It's a, it's a, it's called a Polycom. It's a virtual, it's a virtual-
You got it. That's what you're using for arraignment in the jail.
But we can't anymore. That's, that has been taken away from us.
Why?
The county will no longer, they don't have staffing to be able to turn that machine on for us. So that's, that means that Judge Poole and our City Prosecutor and myself or a senior clerk go into the jail every Wednesday from here. We leave at 3 o'clock and we run down to the jail and we see as many people as we can and then we run back here to hear the rest of our afternoon session. So Yamhill County has a new sheriff. Yamhill County has a new jail commander. Judge Poole has reached out to try to have another conversation with maybe if we can get back into some policies that were in place before that showed success that we're not seeing now. And like I said, Yamhill County Jail is our partner. The PD, the McMinnville PD Police Department is our partner. We're not trying to say that the court has hurdles because of these things, but they are definitely things that we need to work out to be able to get some more success rates on some of these cases.
I might be able to expand just a little bit more on the jail staffing side.
Please.
Obviously, I don't work for the jail, but if, if I, if I might. I just, first of all, want to say thanks to Jason and his crew. We've had, I don't know how long it goes back, conversations with the jail and the retirement of Captain Lux, well deserved, but you know, we need to fill that gap and we're going to get there with their new hirings that Jason talked about. But I'm fairly familiar with sort of the command staff at the Sheriff's Office and have learned about some of the inner workings of the jail. It's staffing. I don't want to blame at all on that, but one of the key factors is staffing. I can't speak to the specifics of how many corrections deputies you need to have per adult in custody in the jail, but that is a lot of what they're facing right now, just trying to hire and expand their force. That is one of the limiting factors. It literally comes down to whether there is a corrections deputy available to move an adult in custody from their cell block to the sort of visitation rooms that are used, the public visitation rooms that are used for Muni Court's arraignment purposes. Another factor is they are the visitation rooms that get used for the adult in custody's attorney times, attorney visits, and we're up against that, literally trying to, the jail has to manage that and make sure that it's not infringing on the adult in custody's rights to have access, ready access, timely access, things like that. So part of the discussions that went on months and months ago was what are, literally, let's figure out like, what do you say is a good time in between meal deliveries, lockdowns, adult in custody counts that go on in the jail, all take their staff. And they're literally on a very rigid schedule. And it, we have found out over time that you just have these moments, these windows of time. So I just wanted to add that, that it's a whole nother operation inside, inside a corrections facility like that.
Thank you. Counselor Chenoweth? Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Geary. Keep going.
One more. You, you had mentioned a request coming for more days of Muni Court. I just want to confirm that'll be via the budget process and overall discussion city-wide.
I'm not clear where I would request that, but I've been, in the fall, we had some discussions about software implementation and we also had some discussions about where the court's time could be used more appropriately. The budget has some implications, but not on some of the things you might think, like Judge Poole's time in McMinnville, his contract covers any additional time that we may need. So there won't be an ongoing cost for his services. The traffic days that I want to add, no, don't require a City Prosecutor because they're a violation, so there wouldn't be a City Prosecutor contract charge on any of that. I am asking in the budget for making one of my part-time clerks a full-time clerk so I can staff some of these extra things that we'd like to do on programming. But yeah, so what I know is that the court, to make any changes to the schedule or request any changes to court proceedings, the council has to give us their blessing. And so that's what I would ask at a future hearing, at a future date for a couple of extra days of court.
Yeah. I guess I would just ask a follow-up on what the process would be for that and when.
Okay. Counselor Chenoweth?
I actually don't have any questions, but I will say, if my fellow counselors have not been down here on a Wednesday, it is, I came down here and not because I had a ticket and just hung out and watched everything that happens down here. And you walk away knowing that they really need a software upgrade. The amount, I would, I would think maybe the software upgrade would free up the hours that you need to do the rest of it because the amount of time they spend running back and forth in here is, it's, it's, it's mind-boggling. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. We appreciate that you came down that day. We welcome anyone to come down any Wednesday between the hours of 9:00 and 4:30, 5:00, 6:00 if it's a bad day, to come just check out what the Muni Court does and what the staff handles and just kind of the caseload that we see.
Counselor Geary, do you want to follow up or do you want a moment?
It was just reviewing some notes I had. I heard Captain Lux talk and I had notes about staffing levels were independent of their ability to fill all 260 beds. So I was wondering if you, is that what you were talking about, the staffing is limited to, is that bed capacity, but that's not what is, is, was being referenced?
Yeah, I'm going to be careful and not-
Okay.
-comment for them, but generally what we've ran in, what we ran into in our conversations was they have a certain population that can fluctuate at times, but they have, they have some staffing requirements that they have to meet, you know, corrections deputies per adult in custody. So I don't know if I can answer your question with any certainty because I can't, I'm hesitant to speak on what those are because we just don't deal with them. We just know that they've come up in conversation. Captain Lux, the jail commander who just retired at the end of 2023, was super helpful in trying to get this started. And now that they've hired a new commander, I'm sure it will continue and we'll probably learn more. But that's just one of the things that he was able to explain to us, that it's, it's driven by their internal staffing and they have a lot of forced overtime shifts and things like that. So just kind of opened a glimpse into what goes on in there as to why it's so structured and why we're having difficulties getting Muni Court in.
Copy that. So maybe, maybe much to consider on the operations of the jail and staffing and capacity, and that could be one that comes back to us, maybe a good opportunity. and that could be one that comes back to us, maybe a good opportunity with the change in leadership there, as you referenced, to learn more and present that with the new administration there.
Yes, yeah. I'm sure it will continue to be a good working conversation, or a good working relationship a hundred percent, I'm convinced of that. And hiring somebody from, I'm not sure where he came from, but it's going to be a good thing to, you know, bring in somebody with a lot of experience and, you know, bring some ideas from another facility, it sounds like, so.
I have this marked on follow-ups because I definitely think that there's a, I don't have clarity right now, and so I think that it's an important follow-up.
Very good.
Okay. Thank you. And Counselor Peralta, sorry, I couldn't see you.
Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned that there were a hundred-and-fifty citations in 2023 on the unlawful camping ordinance. Do you know what percentage of the one-fifty were no-shows to court?
We typically run a twenty-five percent FTA rate on most case types. I would say that that one would fall in line with that.
So, it's, you don't think that it's out of line with, with other?
I think that community gives us ample opportunity at a second bite at the apple in the sense that they're cited again for something else in, in here for another reason, or coming in on the wrong court date, and we very quickly are able to make that their court date. And so, we see people who, like Director Berg was talking about, using this as a public facility for warming shelter, so, not that it's freezing, but on a nasty winter day and this building's open, it sure is pretty inviting to come in and have a seat, and then we realize that that person has an FTA worn out and that that person can appear that day, and we make that happen. And so, I would say that the FTA rate is the same, but we do see them more frequently.
Got it. Thank you. I guess I'll just put my comment in favor of the expansion of service level to more days for your department.
Thank you.
And that, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Payne.
I think I'm backpedaling a little bit here as I sort of process all the information, but I'm curious why the ordnance, the camping ordinance doesn't reconcile with the codes against like rubbish and human waste and the enforcement. Why are we only, it feels, it feels like, and I'm probably wrong, but it feels like only working the camping angle.
I'm not exactly sure if I understand your question, but as far as the history and the specifics of eight-point-three-six, it is just the camping angle. Now, as we have sort of alluded to among different department heads, there are peripheral behaviors as we talk about a particular community, and their enforcement, maybe addressed later or...
Yeah, I can tell you right now, it's not in the camping ordinance, but there's code, city ordinance against offensive littering, what have you. There's state statute against that sort of thing. So, this is a standalone prohibited camping that deals specifically with the camping, the violation of that ordinance. There's other ordinances or other code that deals with the behavioral type stuff, disorderly conduct, trespass, that sort of thing. Makes sense?
Yeah, so, I guess what I want to clarify is because the public nuisances, the, the heavy rubbish and like the needles being on the ground as a safety concern and that we have a code specific to human waste, that goes through community development?
No, it goes through the PD. We've got criminal statutes on that. There's criminal statutes for offensive littering, et cetera.
And I would be able to provide those citation numbers if you're interested on offensive littering or public elimination of waste or any of those kinds of sites. We have those numbers for the last five years.
Yeah, I don't fully understand your question.
I guess...
Do you mind reframing it or trying again? You don't look like you're getting the answer you want, and I don't understand what you're asking, and I'd like to make up that difference and understand your question and hopefully get...
Well, I guess it's, it's kind of spoken to on the statistics here with the prohibited camping, but I hear a lot about the seventy-two hours, seventy-two hours, seventy-two hours, and there's been talk tonight about sort of enforcement of things that maybe get us out of the seventy-two hours, like other criminal behavior, and now we're talking about, you know, human waste is one of those things and needle use, and when I think about needle use, especially with substance abuse, you're talking about hepatitis B, potential hepatitis C, and it gets more severe from there. And then, you know, the school issue keeps getting brought up and the location of the camps, and, sorry, and I just, so first, I haven't read a report where anything is reconciled between the human waste and the debris other than prohibited camping and cleanup. So, if there's human waste citations happening or, or, I don't know, disposal of needles or whatever, if there's other things that are related to our code that are happening on a compliance level, I don't know, and that's fine. I don't need to know. But, I think the community wants to know enforcement-wise what's happening, because it feels like a lot of the conversation is just about camping, but it's not just about camping. So, Jason, thank you. It would be nice to know more specifically what other issues related to the unhoused population are being addressed through municipal court. I feel like the community would value that. I certainly would.
And we have three Excel spreadsheets that our senior clerk, our very dedicated senior clerk, Susanna Branson, has gone over the data and pulled and got those numbers out to us, and so I can send those to you. They're broken down by case type, they're broken down by, it was a deep dive, it was revenues collected from some of those things and fines, you know, fines that were given and basically just the basic breakdown of everything that came out of the criminal court regarding case types and then the revenue surrounding those case types.
Thank you.
If I may speak to part of your question.
Sure.
I'm not sure that you are conflating, but I have heard this conflation happen in this discussion, and if I can take an opportunity just to clarify, the seventy-two hour rule is an abatement rule, and it's a rule by which upon notice, nothing will be abated, taken away by the city for seventy-two hours. Still, if there is a, if there is violative conduct at any point, violative conduct can be prosecuted. Violative conduct does not wait for seventy-two hours. That's, that is separate and good to keep separate in conceptualizing this conversation.
Thank you. And that helps me be able to clarify that again, in the community, at least for me when I'm connecting with stakeholders, I don't hear people complain about RVs being parked. I hear them complain about needles on the ground and the dangers that that presents to youth walking across the field, to the, to go to the baseball field, or buckets full of feces in walking paths. So, it's the relevance to the camping. If we had a row of pretty little maintained tents that didn't have a bunch of rubbish outside of them, I think we would be having a different conversation. Then maybe we would be exploring a managed campground or whatever, forgive me for not being able to recall the phrasing, but thank you for asking, asking for the clarifier, but it is specific to what that lifestyle or what the lifestyle we see here means for us, and that is a lot of hazardous waste, a lot of rubbish, and frequent drug use. So, as code compliance goes, I don't see or know, I don't know what I don't know. I don't know that on a code compliance level, we have this tool for that enforcement.
So, I have a note here on one of our follow-ups would be data on other prohibited activities that are available. That's what I hear you asking for. Is that correct?
Yes, and enforceable or how to go about it.
Can I even be more pointed and say, are we actually enforcing our code on those issues?
So, for example, Monday, we arrested six for prohibited camping, and somebody was arrested for offensive littering as well for scattering rubbish. So, yes, they do, they are, they can, not all the time, be included within the charging instrument for prohibited camping.
Thank you.
And I would also just like to acknowledge that the public may not be aware, but we on council get every week an email related to police enforcement action, whether that's enforcement on camping or littering or other types of things, and the chief has done actually, and his agency have done a very good job of keeping us informed about the various activities that they're doing for enforcing, so I appreciate that, Chief.
City manager?
So, one of the things we'll do, Jason and his team can come up with some more data to demonstrate that. I can tell you, I read the docket almost every week, and it is not unusual to have somebody who's cited for prohibited camping, but also cited for two or three other violations that are not directly related to prohibited camping. So, we can come up with that information for you.
Thank you. Counselor Mankey?
Fairly short question. You said you have two days of court a week and you want more. My recollection is that the judge is available three days a week, correct? But, we are short on other personnel, that's why you want another person full-time.
We have court once a week. We'd like to expand that to...
I know, but the judge is actually available three days a week.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Okay, and council president?
Thank you, Mayor. Jason, thanks for the end-up deep dive into muni court.
You're welcome.
You've mentioned the additional two days, and the only budgetary impact I heard was you going from a half-time to a full-time FTE. Is there other budgetary impacts that you anticipate whenever that comes before council?
No, it's just moving someone from a point-six-oh to a one-point-oh FTE. That's the only impact for that move.
And to put that into dollars, is that thirty grand or eighty grand, or any idea what their salary range is?
I believe it got calculated at twenty-six thousand in the ad package. I can get that to you specifically, but I think it's closer to thirty.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And thanks for all the information tonight.
And Counselor Chenoweth, you have a follow-up?
Yeah, what was the software cost?
I think that it had a heavy one-time cost and then it has an annual cost attached to it. I believe that it was forty-five thousand dollars annually, and then the initial was closer to seventy-five thousand dollars.
All right. And who is our next presenter, Mr. Towery?
Chief Scales.
Thank you, Chief Scales.
Oh, what a night. So, it is eight forty-five, and hopefully we can go through these slides. I know that there's been, I wish there was, people could have stayed a little longer, but the night is, the night's been going long. Tonight, I want to talk specifically about enforcement, abatement, and then gaps that are obviously been somewhat discussed peripheral here. I've got Captain Fessler, who's our field operations, he's in charge of patrol, and then as we dive into some of the gaps, Ty Darby, a fire marshal for the fire districts here, talk a little about some of the gaps that is specific to their field, but next slide. We're going to talk real quickly about enforcement, and a number of you all have, get our weekly emails, sometime not weekly, sometimes every couple of weeks, but we're averaging on, on average, well over a hundred-and-thirty calls for service per year, or excuse me, per month related to prohibited camping. Kind of the back way, or how this comes about is upon receiving those prohibited camping calls, our officers specifically usually would be Officer Height, but sometimes it's our patrol officers as well, they're going to respond to the area and they're going to begin the process of, one, educating those that are illegally camping. Again, a lot of the people already know it, they're repeat offenders, but we still go back and we provide them with the education materials, and if they're in a tent or if they're in a RV, a vehicle, we're going to provide them with a seventy-two hours notice to come within, into compliance under our municipal code eight-point-three-six. The education component, I think, is important because we talk about provoking hope, we talk about YCAP. Those education is a big pamphlet, it's got a number of local resources that we can send them to in hopes that they can find stable housing and find a way out of the cyclical issues that we're dealing with. Throughout the process, our officers are going to document the locations of these encampments and their failure to move. That's part of that seventy-two hour notice, all right? And the reason is, is if it moves, it restarts the clock and it comes back, it can restart the clock. I want to say that after seventy-two hours and they failed to leave and we provided them all the information that they need, it can be abated, and abatement is different than the criminal citation. That's a distinct. The abatement is the civil process with which we take the property and we hold it as evidence of prohibited camping. As you, as you'll notice, it takes, and I'll get into the next slide a little bit, it takes quite a bit to get an RV moved versus a tent, those abated, but those persons that are cited or arrested are cited under the municipal code, which is a C misdemeanor. It is a misdemeanor, it is a crime, it's not a violation, which means you can go to court and you can be sanctioned into the, into, into custody. I also say that the cost to abate the camps, that's where we're really seeing a significant increase. You've seen it like over the last three or four years, we initially requested maybe ten to fifteen thousand dollars a year to have the vehicle towed, if it is a vehicle, or an RV towed, and then abated, which I mean, when I say abated, I mean dismantled. The dismantling costs now and solid waste removals, it's really, we're pushing into the fifty-five to sixty-thousand-dollar range right now, and that's in this fiscal year that we're currently in. That's the cost that the city, the PD is pushing out to the people to come tow it and abate it, dismantle it, okay? So, it's a significant cost, and it's continued to balloon over the, over this last few years.
Is that per?
No, excuse me, if I said per, it's, that's the total we're up to. On average, our abatement costs are, I want to say about four to five thousand dollars per unit, thirty-five-hundred per unit, okay? That's problem, and I will give Captain Fessler an opportunity to maybe chime in if he wants to about the enforcement piece.
I just want to touch on, I know it's hard to read, I just want to touch on that diagram up there that has the red and yellow stripes. I'm the one who actually creates that, it's just in Excel, to try to keep track of the monthly numbers, calls for service, but I just want to emphasize, because it's listed up there, about a hundred-and-thirty calls for service. That's just the camping ordinance call type. So, when calls come into dispatch, they get pigeonholed into a lot of different call types, and we have a camping ordinance call type. So, a citizen calls in or business owner calls in and wants to report what appears to be a camping violation, most of the time the dispatchers, you know, they ask questions and they'll get it pigeonholed into that call type. But, it really does depend on what the citizen describes and the dispatcher's sort of best attempt to dispatch the call under whatever the heading is. So, I just wanted to emphasize that. That hundred-and-thirty is low, because all I can generally search for is the camping ordinance call type, because they'll come in as a suspicious person, suspicious vehicle, a welfare check, and it's impossible to sort through all those and get an accurate count. So, that is low. I just want to emphasize that, that it, on a monthly basis, it would be, it's higher than that, so.
Okay. Any questions about the enforcement piece, and then I'm going to go to the abatement?
We'll go through the council again. I think we'll start this, this side this time. Counselor Mankey, Counselor Payne, Counselor Peralta, Counselor Chenoweth.
Yeah, so, one question I have is I, and if he's listening, you know, we've, we, at least temporarily and maybe much longer, have lost a key component to this in Officer Height.
Yeah.
And I guess this may go to Sergeant Fessler, since he's the one who's taking, who's in that, over that area, but can you please reassure us, who's taking over that role? And one of the things that I think is important, with just one person doing it, we weren't having enough coverage even with just one.
Exactly.
So, who's taking that role? What's the plan and how's that looking?
Great question, Counselor, and briefly, I would, I received that same question from... Great question, Counselor. And briefly, I received that same question from Commissioner Bershaw today. Officer Height had a medical emergency, he's going to be out for the foreseeable future. We're fairly confident he will come back. But to your point, who takes this up? Currently, Tim Height is the majority of the person that is taking these calls. It is going to fall to our, and captains, and I, and our supervisors, our sergeants and corporals understand that it is going to fall upon the patrol section to still deal with these. And it probably, and I'm going to be very candid with you, will not be as effective, because as David Grenchaw correctly points out, this isn't a solvable problem right now. This is a managed problem, and Tim Height essentially is our manager of this program in dealing with this long-term and short-term. So, the gaps will be filled by our patrol officers. They went out this morning, they arrested 10 people for prohibited camping. As I mentioned earlier, a couple days ago, we had five people. It's just going to have to be an ongoing churn. I'm going to say there's going to be gaps. There's going to be gaps in the amount of abatements that occur, because abatements need to be tracked, because if they move, we can't abate them. It's going to be, it's going to be a fact for a little while, until we can figure out or get Tim back into the fold, who will manage that specific piece of it. But the enforcement and the criminal arrests of the ordinance for prohibited camping, it's going to fall to our officers. And they already do, because they will come out, and they will routinely cite, arrest, what have you. But I will tell you, there will be a gap in that specific piece of the service that you're going to see in our communities right now. And to the community members, I get it. I completely get it. When I get an email from a citizen, Mr. Sorenson was very poignant and very direct with his, with what's going on in McDaniel, it would upset me in my neighborhood as well. But there will be, there will be a gap with removal of those RVs. The enforcement of the ordinance itself is going to be taken by our patrol section, though.
Before you go on, I just want to express that I'm sure I can speak on behalf of the council, that our best to Officer Height, and that we, of course, wish for a speedy recovery.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, that was the only thing I wanted to add, was let him know if you speak to him. My prayers are with him.
Thank you.
Counselor Geary?
Yes. Was wondering if you could talk me through sort of a situational difference in the approach, and how it most commonly plays out in an abatement scenario, in a, in an area where camping is prohibited, and an area where camping is not prohibited? Thinking in terms of both just camping abatement, or camping enforcement, enforcement of the camping ordinance, and situations where these tangential behaviors, punishable behaviors or criminal behaviors also exist?
I'm not sure I fully understand. I'm going to recap it, and we'll see. Do you want to understand the enforcement difference? I'm going to use our very real-time example here of McDaniel, where we have a zone change. So, on, if you were parked next to the baseball field, that is prohibited 100% of the time, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, versus if you were just a little closer to 99W, where it's prohibited during daytime, but allowed at nighttime? Is that the difference you're looking for?
Yeah.
So, how do you enforce differently if a vehicle is parked in a residential zone, or in a park where it's prohibited all the time?
Great question. They can be arrested right off the bat. That's not a problem. It's the abatement piece that regardless of where they're at, if they're in a residential, if they're in the urban renewal area, if they're downtown, the 72 hours, once that campment is established, it is going to take 72 hours at a minimum to get that camp abated and moved on. Does that make sense?
In a, in an area where it is outright prohibited?
That's correct. Anywhere.
Anywhere. Okay?
As soon as it's established, which by our code right now says immediately, essentially, 72 hours at a minimum, so regardless. Yeah, I'll go into the abatement slide if you'd like, but...
Yes. At the beginning of that, you started by saying arrested.
Yes.
That's referring to the person independent of the camp?
That is exactly correct.
Okay, very good.
Counselor Chenoweth would like you to put a fine point on the parks' point, and I think this is great, because there's been a lot of confusion about why we can tow in a park when we can't tow elsewhere. And I know that this was covered earlier, but when you talked about June 1st, and disallowing RVs, but could either, or both of you put the, put the, put the fine point on what the difference is there, and why we can have a different enforcement in our parks than elsewhere?
Susan, if you're okay with it, I'll try to answer it, because we had a great, we had a lot of good collaboration. I think we got lucky with the way the parks ordinance is written, first of all, because it has language in there that talks about, first of all, that the parks director can make a directive that says certain things are going to happen or not going to happen. The parks ordinance also has specifics that if a vehicle is, like, not parked in a designated space, or parked sort of illegally alongside the roadway, and some of those very specific things, they can, the vehicle can be removed, towed immediately, removed from the park. That's written in the parks ordinance. So, basically, if that occurs, you can take action right away. The reason that it seems like the park, the ban on RVs, and travel trailers, and any of those large vehicles, seems, seems so simple, I guess at the time, was because none of the parks are designed to accommodate vehicles of that size. None of the parking spaces are meant for 30-foot-long RVs. The travel ways, you can't park in a normal parking space if you have a travel trailer and a pickup, because you have to unhook, and now you're occupying more space than you should if you're just a one-person car. So, it seemed like a very easy solution, and the reason it was, is allowable is because it's kind of this circular thing. First of all, the park says that only vehicles can park in designated spaces, or they can be towed. There are no designated spaces for RVs and large vehicles, thus you just come right back around to, if an RV comes down and parks in the park, there is no designated space for you. Doesn't matter if you're living out of it full-time, or you're traveling through town to stop and see your grandchild's soccer game. You cannot park those vehicles. And that's why we figured out that it's not specific to houselessness. It's size and dimension, and how the parks are created. So, that's hopefully a best explanation I can give, but that's how we arrived at it.
For clarity, and my understanding is that we didn't, I mean, I know we did not change an ordinance. It was within the existing ordinance, what we were able to do was change an administrative rule, and we were able to do that because of the safety concern of parking lots, of the parking lots in the parks not being designed to accommodate large vehicles, and that is the key to the difference in how enforcement happens in those areas. Is that correct?
I believe you're 100% correct, yes.
All right, thank you. Counselor Chenoweth, you had a follow-up?
So, I really don't feel like...
It's not a follow-up. We were still with Counselor Geary asking questions, but if it's a follow-up...
No, I'm going, I'm going on the same topic. I'm just trying to put this wording, I'm a little dear to open a can of worms here. On the other hand, I do want clarity, because the state statute says, once a camp is established, you must give 72-hour notice before you abate. So, I'm struggling to understand, regardless of what our other ordinances say, if a camp has been established in a park, how we get around that 72-hour notice, unless we are, and I did find that I do have the state statute with me, so I'll read what I think perhaps you're saying, you're, we're using this off-ramp. When there is immediate danger to human life or safety, was that the line, because otherwise, it's, once the camp is established, you're bound by the state statute. I don't see how we get around that.
I think you're, I think there's two different ordinances, and I think that's where some of the confusion is coming, is coming in, but I'll let the experts speak to it.
I'll just say that parks are not premise open to the public either, right? They have rules, they have restrictions, that the rules govern how that park is utilized.
Thank you. Counselor Geary?
Can I just add one thing to that, please?
Please, Director Mayor.
The, we are simply regulating the vehicle type, not the activity, or what the vehicle, landscape trailers, fifth wheels, anything that's oversized is what we're regulating, not the activity of camping, or what's occurring in the vehicles. As a matter of fact, if somebody was camping out of their car, they would be allowed in a park. That rule does not change the activity.
Good point. I forgot, yeah.
Thank you.
Very good.
No more questions?
No more questions on enforcement.
Okay. And council president?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Fessler and Scales, for the information. My question revolves around the word "established" earlier this evening, when David spoke about our conservative policy of, that basically, the moment they drop their stuff, it's established. Where other cities are three days, or five days, or one day before it becomes established. If the city, or us as policymakers, were to take that sort of initiative and move further into that risk matrix, what does that do on your end as far as enforcement goes, and what can you do in that initial window versus what you can't do right now with it being an immediate establishment?
Well, I think if you change that, I think it changes the, the calculation. If you change "established" to mean it's whatever X-day down the line, within that window, whether it's 24, 48, 36, 40, whatever it might be, then those campments can be abated immediately. That's the way it's been discussed and relayed.
Right. I think the council president accurately pointed out that that moves us into the risk matrix. We are making that calculation then, but the question for PD is then whether they could actually abate if we are bearing that risk.
I could, go ahead, ask.
I don't, I don't, I don't think I follow. The nature, so I heard you say, we are, our establishment starts right away. I heard you say that. And then I heard, then the tone of Council President Garvin's question was pushing us further into a risk matrix, which I, I hear as bringing that establishment time up sooner, so abatement can happen sooner.
It would, if I understand the question correctly, and as the discussion has gone on, as other cities have implemented this, they're actually moving the definition of establishment later. And so, a campsite doesn't count as established until it's been there for a period of time. As was called out earlier, Medford calls that five days. Now, since the state statute says that if an established campsite exists, you must give it 72 hours to abate. If it does not qualify as an established campsite, under your code, under your interpretation of that word, then maybe you abate immediately.
Got it.
Again, the state did not define that word, and any definition further than ours is moving into the risk matrix that the council president mentioned.
Got it. I was reading the instructions upside down. Got it.
And further on that, David, where's Grants Pass in the word "established," and where is Medford in the word "established," since those were the two cases you cited? I do believe Roseburg was three days, but since they, they haven't been challenged yet, I mean, where do you see there being a clip on that risk matrix? Granted, anything gets us farther into that, but where is the...
Medford... I'm sorry.
Where does that escalate?
Medford makes the definition at five days. It was not addressed in their court case. Ostensibly, it therefore stands. The city of Grants Pass didn't have time, place, manner regulations. It had a broad prohibition on camping. And so, it, I don't know that you could even consider it immediate in the lines that you would consider McMinnville.
Okay, they just outright banned it, and that's why they're in court?
That's correct.
Okay. But any of the other, like, 24, 48, 72-hour established timeframes haven't been challenged, and even Medford's five days wasn't actually challenged in their court case?
So, I have broached this question with some of my colleagues around the state, and this is considered sort of the novel approach in this area. Everybody understands that it's not well-trod, but seems to be open to interpretation.
Okay, thank you. And then, for chief, with your network of, we're in the chief situation, and the different chiefs you interact with, of some of those cities mentioned, what do they do in that lack of established window? Are they immediately abating, or are they drag-and-dropping to a certain area, or?
Yeah, I have not talked...
How are they utilizing that?
Yeah, great question. I have not talked to my chiefs specifically about how they're, they're handling it. So, I couldn't answer that. I can certainly reach out to Medford, et cetera, those that have those longer duration.
And, sorry...
Yeah, if you could put that on the follow-up list, just a couple different cities. I maybe work with David on ordinances he's aware of that have those timeframes, but that would be something I would like to have in front of us for consideration.
Will do.
Thank you.
I just have one question. When we abate, you mentioned some of the high cost is due to the fact that the vehicles, or the RVs are being dismantled. Could you explain why that process happens, as opposed to a hold, and then potentially a return, and then as kind of a continuation of that, do we see the same individuals that were living in RVs, we abate the RV, and then they're still living on the street, but now they're living in tents?
Yeah, that's, that's generally what we're seeing. If you allow, I'll go into this real quickly, how, with the abatement process. I did say, once the 72 hours has lapsed, and I'm going to be candid with you, 72 hours would be the gold standard. I mean, these, as you'll see in the slide, are very, specifically, the vehicles, the RVs are very nuanced in how we can take them in, when we can take them in, et cetera. So, if you'll, if you will. As I mentioned, tents, pods, RVs, vehicles throughout them are sometimes inoperable, so they're towed to our storage site. Our storage site's currently being rented, as we know, at an annual cost of $30. Upwards, we can keep 50, $30,000, excuse me, and we can keep upwards of 15 RVs, has space for a few vehicles as well, as though that is where we'll keep our tents, et cetera, that have been taken. These items have to be taken because they are used for the evidence of the crime of prohibited camping. As mentioned, as I'm going to mention right now, these are complicated. One, in the timing of these abatements, as the work needs to be scheduled with our providers. And I will say, our providers are out of Albany when they can come take it, or the tow can happen immediately. We're getting crunched on space in there, because it does, as Jason had mentioned, it does take sometimes months before we can get these, a court order releasing the evidence from the city prosecutor that says, this can be released, but it can only be released if the person has the title, or a registered owner has insurance, et cetera, okay? So, it's got to be legal to be on the street. Once that doesn't happen, that's when we are taking that, that company down from Albany, calling them up to schedule when they can come get it. Sometimes they've got the capacity to dismantle it within a day or two, sometimes it's a week or two. Sometimes we have to call, or use an outside vendor. I will tell you, we're getting, it is getting more difficult. We have actually had to schedule a vendor to come from Oklahoma, Oklahoma, to come grab these and take them from us and dismantle them. They're not easily dismantled. You have, there's asbestos issues they're going to deal with when they're, when they're dismantling. That's driving those... to deal with when they're, when they're dismantling. That's driving those costs up as well.
So, so, the, you just, you, we, if it's not a street legal vehicle, then it goes into this next step of dismantling. If it is street legal, does it ever get returned to the person?
If it was street legal, that technically, yes.
And they had the insurance, and they had?
Had insurance and all that stuff, yes. Odds are less than 1%. I would imagine we've never released one, as far as I'm aware of, as far as an RV goes. They're usually inoperable, uninsurable, can't find the title, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you. Is, do you have more on this slide you'd like to share, or do you have other slides?
No, I just, if Captain wants to add.
I guess I would just further comment, which may be not mentioned up there, is just a few notes that I thought of before this presentation was, towing charges, just on the day of abatement, I don't have, I can't quote them off the top of my head, but these are large vehicles. There's only one or two tow companies in the area that will take them, or that can haul them. So, you know, we tow cars a lot on a traffic stop for no insurance. Any tow company can come and do that, a regular-sized vehicle. These are large, large vehicles, and so the tow bills alone are hundreds of dollars just to get it to the lot, let alone then we get to the eventual outcome of the sort of scrapping, recycling, which, you know, several thousand dollars. And all those are paid, you know, they have to be paid. That person provided the service. It's not going to wait to see if we can bill the, bill the owner or the occupant of it. It just gets paid.
Okay, that's what I've got for abatement. I'm going to go to the gaps, one of the last, but any questions about the abatement? Fairly straightforward.
I don't, Councilor Gary?
Maybe not totally, Jermaine, but it, if, a refrain I've heard is, on the subject of the street legality, or insurability, or valid driver's license, I've heard a refrain of, it, that, that should be able to cure a lot of this stuff because they aren't street legal before you abate them. Not, not in terms of getting them back once you've towed them, but in terms of not having to worry about camping or other behaviors. The fact that it isn't street legal should be enough to pull it off the street. Can you comment on that?
Yeah, I will, I will comment that we cannot, because they're not street legal and they're parked, just tow them away because they're inoperable. What we can do, however, is if we do have them driving around, state statute does allow for us to seize the vehicle for being, for, for the vehicle being uninsured. We have towed a couple, two or three RVs for that. They end up at our, at our tow lot because gales or Mack Towing do not allow these big RVs onto their, onto their lot because they don't have their dismantler's license. But, to your point, driving uninsured will get you towed statutorily, and then we would hold that, but it is not prohibited camping. The problem being is that we, we don't have the staff to sit and wait for an RV to drive away. If we do find them driving, we have, obviously, they're going to be a driving PC. You're going to have probable cause to stop that vehicle because they're generally without lights, without whatever it might be, current tags, et cetera. So, to your point, that doesn't solve the solution just because, solve the problem just because they're sitting on the side of the street.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and I know you have one more presentation, and I think there are two more, or you have one more, and there?
It's done. We're going to be done after the?
You're done after that?
After this last slide. We're at, we're at.
Is all the presentation done? Okay, I'm just looking at the timing, that's why I want to, because, you know, we scheduled four hours, I don't want to run late.
Yep, I, I promise. I'm going to try to nail this bad boy. Can we go to the next slide? I wanted to real quickly touch on the identified gaps. You saw in your packet that we did have, we've identified a gap through the fire district, through our, just our call for service. Two that I think I want to touch on specifically. Ones are concerns about open flame and the need to protect persons and property from these fires. With RVs, passenger cars being abated, we found that many of these occupants, as your question alluded to earlier about RVs, they do transition to tents, and when they're in these improvised structures, they are starting more fires, cooking and warming. In 2023 alone, McMinnville Fire District, and I appreciate Ty Darby, our Fire Marshal, his work on that, they reviewed 28, 288 general service and fire calls, and it was learned that 73, roughly 25% of their calls, related to warming, cooking, unattended fires that were there and call for service was initiated, or they got out of control and they had to go in there and deal with it. Currently, our, our, our city ordinance for prohibited camping does not discuss open flame. ORS 195-530 specifically allows for cities to regulate the use of fire or open flame. It's not a given that if you're tent camping, or you're in an RV, or what have you, that you can just start a fire. There is a mechanism, if the city council, through their policy, through your discussions, want to touch on that, that is certainly a call driver for both ourselves and, and the fire district, but I would be remiss if I didn't add that. That is something to think about moving forward, and there is literature in your council packet specifically to the, the question of open, open flame. And I'd ask, Mr. Darby, do I call you sir, because since you're in the suit, if you want to add anything to that specific discussion? He's never in a suit.
Thank you, Chief, I appreciate it. I, I would just add, we didn't talk about this, but we did have over the court, and we didn't, when we broke down the data, we were very specific. We wanted to be very holistic about how we approached what we were looking at. So, we looked at, a lot of the data that comes in is generated through, through YCOM. So, when we look at things with unauthorized burning, we actually went into, in each individual of those 288 calls, and actually read the CAD notes to clarify. We wanted to scrub, you know, was there a bark dust fire, you know, was it a backyard burn? We really looked holistically at, these were fires that were occurring outdoors on public property, and in many cases, they were either attended, or there were folks running away from the fire when we showed up, or they were basic warming fires. We did not add, we did have a few RV fires over the, and this, to back up, this was from January 1/23 through December 31st. I didn't clarify one thing. We did, actually during an abatement procedure on Marsh, we did actually have a trailer slash RV catch on fire while it was in the back of a dump truck, and Public Works quickly dumped the load. But, so, to that point, we didn't really capture the RV fires. This was solely just the outdoor warming, cooking fire data. And I'm, if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer the fire district's perspective on this.
All right, and is it a good time to go generally to questions?
Absolutely.
Okay, we'll start with you, Councilor Genowith.
Are we doing general questions, or just the fire questions?
I, I think you said your presentation is complete?
Well, I just wanted to quickly touch on the second piece that I think would be remiss if we didn't talk about it. Community concerns about encampments surrounding school zones. There's pros and cons to that, okay? We recognize partners within the MSD. They've asked for the city to consider it, these safe zones, and I, I think that's something, if you want to open this up, I think it's certainly got to be on the table, understanding that other communities have included this in their safe zone, but recognizing also that the schools are already within residential zones, for the most part. You know, I think Buell is outside of one, or a portion of it. But secondly, ORS 195-505, under our current ordinance, is going to require a 72-hours notice prior to abatement. I just, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that, but I think it's certainly a topic of discussion as a policymakers do, and I would leave that in your court. Now, I'm done.
Okay, thank you, Chief. And then, these maps are here, and I know we've tried a couple times to communicate with some visuals as well, and I think there's some of these maps out there as well, and aren't these related, this is related specifically to that general, that, this part of the conversation. So, if anybody wants one of these, there is a legend on here, but essentially, where you see the red streets, that is currently where camping is allowed in the city. So, if you, if, and then this also is demonstrating potential school buffer zones at a variety of levels, and so you can see that, that crossover. You can see the, again, the red is the total number of, of places where camping is currently allowed in the city. You'll see the orange, it says allowed but physically restricted, so that, that means that it's, there's no shoulder, or something of that nature, where it's, it's physically not possible for an RV to, to stop there. And, questions, right? Okay, so, Councilor Genowith, we'll start with you.
First is a curiosity question, and this is for the Fire Marshal. The, the truck in the McDonald's drive-thru, was that connected to this homeless-type situations, or what happened?
No, not to the best of my knowledge, it was not, no.
Okay. Yeah, that was my, in terms of the, I, I am all in favor, I've said it before, I don't, I don't have a reason not to move on the school zone. I think we ought to be doing an exclusionary zone around the schools. And beyond that, I think I've asked all my questions through the course of this meeting. I'm ready for deliberation with you guys.
Councilor Gary?
Well, contrary to Chief Skills's opinion, I think you look great, Ty.
Thank you, Councilor Gary, I appreciate that.
You bet. So, I guess, Jermaine to the map, and then helpful to my consideration as we move to consideration and deliberation. If I, if I understand this map, there's the, the area, I guess we, do we call it Railroad Avenue, Railroad area on, is it 13th? I don't know if it's officially 13th or 12th, wherever that bends and curves across the railroad, and then if you were headed towards Lafayette Avenue, you could turn right into Alpine Avenue there. It's the, it's that, it's that terminus, that northern terminus of Alpine, right in there. You come across the railroad tracks, there's a grassy area there. Do we call that Railroad Avenue? I think I've seen it in the reports, it's referred to that. But anyway, that area, if I interpret this map, is, is an area that has a black street that is, is not allowed for camping. Is that correct?
That's right.
So, as our current code stands, everything you see there is as illegal as it can be?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do you have other questions? Do you have a follow-up, Council?
And again, once, once established, 72 hours, so, again.
So, so what you see there would be an indication of creating, of that street being illegal to camp on, and any street being illegal to camp on, you, it could be a Railroad Avenue.
Yes.
Yeah, I do. I'm, when this map was drawn, and it was determined, you know, the, the boundaries around the schools were, were created in this pretty picture graph, was the scent, what was the point of, like, if it says 250 feet, where exactly did that 250 feet begin? Did it begin on the?
Let me jump in on that, because I have your.
Can I finish the question, please?
Well, sure, go for it.
Thanks. Does that 250 feet begin at the outside of the school property, or does that 250 feet begin like some random center point of the property?
So, now I'll go ahead and answer exactly the same way as I was going to before, which is that there was actually a fair amount of conversation around that to make sure that there was continuity throughout our city codes. And, sir, would you like to, to answer a little bit more specifically? It's, it's from the edge of the school property, but that it is also consistent with all other time, place, and manner restrictions through the city. Is that correct?
Absolutely, absolutely. It is from the property line. The actual value, 250, 500, and 1,000, those are a bit arbitrary, just for graphically, so you could see what a buffer would look like, but those are measured from the property line.
Councilor Menke?
So, I'm, I, understanding, even though it's not going to make a serious difference, that we can establish a school zone here, you wouldn't, this isn't going to cause great heartburn for our city manager or anything, if we did this around Patton and Sue Buell, which obviously have some commercial around them. I'm, I'm just asking you. We don't want to do this ever. I mean, obviously, I, I'm not sure how much difference it makes because it's still got to be subject to the 72-hour rule, but.
Right, I think it's a legitimate policy discussion to have. You may want to dive into this deeper during your joint meeting with the school board next month. I think the, the point that the map makes is that the vast majority of the streets around the schools, the, the camping is prohibited already. This adds a few more places where the overnight camping would not be allowed, that you can see any of those streets that are red that show up inside a buffer zone. Those streets would no longer be available for camping overnight. They're already not available for camping during the day, which is the, the issue that we're dealing with. So, it doesn't, it, it won't have an impact on our ability to abate. There'll be a few less places for folks to be able to camp overnight, and it may generate additional citations for prohibited camping, but the, the vast majority of the citations we're writing now, they are for prohibited camping, so it's, it's because the, the camps are left too long, or left during the day.
Well, I would certainly support a discussion on that, particularly for those two particular schools because of the commercial around.
Councilor Payne?
I'm just curious how many abatements there have been.
Jeez, well, if, if you go back to my weekly reports, they, I mean, I didn't get a tally, but if you, I mean, I certainly can do that. Golly. 30, 40 abatements, RVs, to include tents? That'd be the smaller number.
Thank you.
I, I can get that number for you, though.
No, no, I got the emails. I, yeah, I can go back and look. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Peralta?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I guess the only comment that I would make is that even though it is a relatively small amount of area that would come into, sorry?
Thanks.
No, I was just saying, even though it's a relatively small amount of area that we would be adding to the prohibited camping law, I do think we should do it around schools. I think there's a solid policy basis for it, and I think it's a very defensible incremental shift in the policy, so.
Thank you. Council President?
Yeah, first, couple questions for Jason, Ty, and Matt. If we were to explore this open flame ban in our ordinance, who has the ability to cite that? Is it just the Fire Marshal, or can an officer cite that as well, or can a, a captain on a fire engine or a battalion chief cite that, or is it really limited to just the Fire Marshal and Deputy Fire Marshal that can cite that? And then, two, for Jason, how does that work through your court system, and, and what is it classified as, and that kind of thing?
Well, as, I know, I would be, I would welcome the fire district personnel to become police officers, but under the proposal, or kind of the framework that we're thinking of in adding it, a possible addition to the prohibited camping, it would be under city ordinance. And then that would be, you would flesh out as policymakers, do you want to make that a crime? Do you want to make it criminal? Do you want to make it a misdemeanor, or do you want to make it a violation? Did I answer your questions, Adam?
Yeah, so the way I understood it is, your police officers could cite open flame as well as the Fire Marshal could.
Uh, no, under this ordinance, under this ordinance, it would be police personnel.
Okay, thank you. And then, Jason, how would that work through your court system? I know it would depend on what we land on as far as the, the level it is, but could you just expand on that?
Sure.
With a hypothetical, hypothetical charge level?
Excuse me, yeah, you're on the right path. So, we see city ordinances cited into us, whether it's a dangerous dog ordinance, or dog running loose, or prohibited camping, or whatever the or whatever the case may be. So those are made policy-level decisions that trickle down to the court. So that's where we would see those.
And, in your guys' framework, Chief Scales, does it separate, or delineate, like, the difference between just an open flame verse, when there's really a heightened level of public safety, like exploding propane tanks behind Winco, or Patton Middle School, or turtle doves that have burnt down to the ground, and things like that?
This is Captain Fessler, I can try to answer that, just based on a handful of other city ordinances that I've researched over the last couple of months. They're about a one-sentence ad, I would say, from my experience, to, to the ordinance. It, it goes through the entire time, place, manner description, like our ordinance does, and then there'll be, like, one more letter and a paragraph that'll just say, you know, open fire, burning of combustible materials, you know, it's just a one-sentence that says any open fire or bonfire, you know, burning trash, blah, 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 is, is not allowed. And then you have to dig down to the end of the ordinance, just like ours, as to what the penalties are, whatever the ordinance is constructed, how, how that's going to be handled. But from my research, it's about a one- or two-sentence ad, that just says fires aren't, open fire and flame, not allowed.
Okay, thank you for that, Fessler. For our attorney, David, where does that put us, if we move that way, as far as litigation risk, when you think about the, the statute, our Martin versus Boise, on the ability to keep yourself warm?
While, in general, my answer to these questions is that it's, it's hard to say at what point the, the additional burden becomes a straw that breaks the camel's back. I think that this one in particular is not a significant straw. It is very close to explicitly already called out in the state statute that codifies these rules, and it points out that open fires don't count as things for keeping warm. Now, that doesn't mean that these cases could not turn that way, that the Supreme Court could not say otherwise, but the state basically makes this carve out currently, and I think would earn some deference if that were to come up.
Okay, thank you. And then, for Fire Marshal Darby, could you expand a little bit about, you know, what, what that's meant for resources and capacity, and what that means for service levels for other fires, were to happen at the same time that we have these, these warming fire, or open flame fire calls come into the system, and what risk that puts the rest of the city out with our current resource levels?
Absolutely, President Garvin. So, for those that don't know, just to provide context to the community members here, too, McMinnville became a fire district as of July 1st, so now we are a service provider to the city. A little context to that, too, is we also have an ambulance service area, which covers 450 square miles. Within that, we, we technically only have one staffed fire engine that, that generally covers that. So, with that said, if we go out to an, an open burning, or an unauthorized burning, or a small warming fire, that generally does take our rig out of service. It doesn't mean that we couldn't possibly divert, depending, depending on the severity of the call. If we have an active structure fire, we wouldn't divert, but there is a possibility that we might have to divert for, for another reason. But, for the most part, if we get an active call for an unauthorized burn in town, or a warming cooking fire, what have you, it would place that engine into, into service for that call.
Okay, thank you.
Does that answer your question, or provide credit?
Yeah, I just want, I just wanted the community to understand that, you know, their, their only paid engine is over 25% of the time responding to a warming fire, and not available for other emergencies within the community.
Is that the end of your questions, Council President?
Uh, it is, and I'm about to go through TSA, so I'll probably be unavailable for a little bit.
Okay, thank you. And we have follow-up questions from both Counselor Chenoweth and Counselor Peralta. I saw Counselor Chenoweth's hand up first, so we'll go to you first, sir.
So, if we consider doing an open fire ban, what will that do regarding, say, the person in the backyard who has a open fire pit, or the person in the backyard that is still using the 50-gallon drum as a way to get rid of trash, and lighting that on fire? What, what would that do for, would, would we be catching those in this process?
That's a great question, and I think we would have to clarify that in the ordinance to, to carve out that portion of it. So, it's not uncommon for us, so, as many folks know, we do have, you know, the seasonal burn bans, but those are DEQ, those are air-quality burn bans. We commonly get called to those, both within the city limits and in our, our rural district. For example, we got a call yesterday from a gentleman who was in the city limits who was burning trash in his backyard, which would be prohibited, so.
That's good to know. I've got a neighbor who does that.
Yeah, feel free to, but, but with that said, so, our enforcement arm, and that's how this, these conversations, kind of, the genesis of our conversations with PD is, as we, a lot of this stuff was, was, is codified under ordinance when we were with the city, the city fire department. Now, as a special service district, as a rural fire district under 478, it, it, we're a little bit removed. So, to, to your point, to answer your question, we would need to carve that out a little bit. Does that, does that answer?
It does. And, and on the trash burning violation, would that be non-emergency police that a person would want to call?
So, it depends, sometimes, yeah. I, I wish we had YCOM here, and I can get back to you on that, but sometimes, I, it really depends on how the call comes through. I mean, we, if it's generated as a hostile fire, that, you know, hey, my neighbor's not, he's got, he's burning trash, and it's a six-foot-tall fire, and it's near the fence, and it's August, you know, we might generate that into a Code Three Lights and Sirens response. And, and for, and for the simple fact, if, back to the, the gentleman who called to complain about his neighbor, we actually didn't respond to that, because we weren't aware of it. He never called 911, he just called to complain about his neighbor. We get, we get both. And we get both in, in and outside of city limits. And, and just to clarify, I don't know if I clarified this earlier, but when we did our data scrub on burning, it was, we made sure we did it within the city limits, because that's kind of the focus of this. But, we do have some that occur right over 99, near 47, just outside of city limits, but we didn't count that, we wanted to be fair with our, our data collection.
And then, to you, Mayor, procedurally, after we get done with our questions, what's next?
Sure, we'll get done with questions, and I'll clarify that before I go on. Counselor Peralta?
Yeah, this is a question for either the chief or the fire district. What do you recommend, if we were to approach a fire ban, that we put that as in terms of misdemeanor category or citation?
Well, in the interest, in the interest of time, I'll, I'll try to be quick. There, there are a couple of fire bans already within Yamhill County. One is the DEQ burn ban, and that applies to, and I won't go into the, the, I, I might have to, but essentially, if you have a population between 1 and 45, there's a three-mile burn ban around the city limits. Generally speaking, that's, that's, we can do backyard seasonal burning, which is, you know, in the fall and the spring. We are not agents of DEQ, but we do get these calls, so that, that's burn ban number one, if you will. Then, in August, September, or maybe early October, depending on the seasonal conditions, we do have the Yamhill County Fire Defense Board, which, which can, and also enact a burn ban throughout the county. Different from the city, but I'm just trying to clarify the burn ban portion. So, your question is, how would we-
No, just what level of, of penalty are you recommending?
Oh, copy that, yeah.
Whether it's misdemeanor or citation, or on what level of misdemeanor?
Yeah, so, in my experience with years with, with fire investigations and arson cases, I mean, there is a level of, and I'll, I won't go too much onto their side, of culpability about the, the knowingly, intentionally, recklessly, we might have to carve that out to maybe, and I don't want to step on your toes, but you would speak to that better, but there could be a, the ability to carve out that language of, was that fire solely set to warm, or was it set with, that's how I, in my experience over the years, the DA might look at that. Was it set near a structure, you know, with the intent to do harm, or was it really merely just a warming fire? But to the case of some of these situations with RVs, I mean, we could have campfires that are threatening other RVs to, not maybe maliciously, just not, you know, unintentionally, just because everyone's close together.
Yeah, I'll just add back, you know, the, this is just, this would be a ban, I don't think there needs to be a culpable mental state, knowingly, recklessly, intentionally. I think it's just an outright ban. I think that's a safe way to go, and we don't get into the legal realm of that. And I, again, as a policymaker, I would say it would, it's important to me that it's all in alignment with what we're seeing through the code right now. C misdemeanor, it's a low-level misdemeanor. But again, C misdemeanors are generally treated as violations, as you heard through the court, so, I, I mean, six, one, half dozen, you know, that, whatever they-
So, you're saying six to one, half dozen to the other, between violation and misdemeanor C?
Generally the same, that's how they get treated, although the crime of C misdemeanor allows us technically to arrest and transport, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Langenberg, the Council President brought up the risk matrix earlier, and, and for some of the few who are still here with us will know that one of my ongoing concerns has been about create, about changes to our ordinance, regardless of, of what kind of change, that, in a changing legal landscape, that changing our ordinance creates a, a risk for the city of creating an unconstitutional system, and that that might invite a lawsuit against the city. So, if that were, if we were, if that were to happen, if that, which, I, let me back up just one second to say that I, I think I generally operate from a place of trying to protect the city and our finite resources, and to make sure that we're making decisions and taking steps forward that are measurable, that are actionable, and that are acceptable, and all while understanding that things, things change over time. So, I operate from kind of a, a place of, you know, trying to keep the, the city safe. And so, one of my concerns is if, if we are to make any sort of change to our ordinance, then what happens to the existing ordinance? If it was, if it were to be challenged, I mean, what happens to our existing ordinance?
If we were taken to court at this moment, based on our code, or at a future moment, based on some anticipated change to the code, it would be likely that the, the code is sort of brought as a whole. These things are considered as an entire scheme for addressing a particular thing. And if it were found, if a portion of it, in its implementation, were found to be unconstitutional, then our code would be struck. We would lose the whole thing.
When it was challenged, or that's a potential outcome of a case?
It's a potential outcome of a case. So, our time, place, manner regulations would be determined unconstitutional, and we would not have them.
Okay. And then, another data point that'll be helpful for me, is that when I look at this map, you know, most of the streets are, are blacked out currently. There's comparatively not a lot of red, or not a lot of allowable places to camp. And, and again, on this map, everything that's blacked out, it is not allowed. And even in this mapping, in some of our problem areas, shows that some of these school buffer zones that are being suggested, it's only at the 1,000-foot level that we actually, that it actually crosses into a red area. And so, my question, related to my concern about the constitutionality of our system, is that if we were to, if we were to implement these, how can I say this clearly? What are our total number of miles of streets? What numbers of miles of our streets allow camping currently, overnight camping currently? And if buffers were implemented, what, how many miles of streets would then allow camping? Or, in other words, what percentage of where camping is currently allowed, would it no longer be allowed? So that's, that is a data point for me, as a follow-up. I'm going to go through the list of follow-ups here, that I have. Counselor Peralta, I have to apologize, there was one you had in the beginning, and I wrote your name, and I didn't take additional notes, so I hope it was right at the very beginning. I hope as we work through these, you can recall what it is, and I'm very sorry about that. So, the, clearly the follow-up question that I just asked about, understanding the, the data around how our overall system would be affected, is one. I have, with Chief Scales, talking with some other cities about their, how they're handling the definitions and the enforcement around the word "established," and I have a couple notes on that. Counselor Chenoweth asked, can we change the, the definition of "established," and Council President asked how that would work into our risk matrix. So I think we're asking for a, a legal opinion there. And we had a question earlier of, if we could understand the specific number of available beds that we have that meet the criteria, I'm not sure where that would fall. We had a pretty hefty follow-up, I heard, with, with the county, a follow-up with public health, and, and how that can affect these, the areas, and especially specific to site contamination by hazardous materials, and, and how can we work with the county on, on that. I also heard follow-up with the county, that sounds like it's underway, but that we will need, we, we, that I heard interest from the council on understanding the accessibility and availability to the jails for our court staff, but also for just booking people in, in jail. I heard some conflicting things there that we need clarity on. I heard a request from Counselor Payne on bringing back data on other prohibited activities that sometimes are co-occurring when we have prohibited camping. I heard a request for additional data on parks, and I'm sorry, I wrote down data on parks. I, I hope you have the note from earlier.
Got it. I think it's the amount of money that we spent on securing our buildings and our staffing.
Ah, yes, thank you. Data on money and time over here, yes, that was, it was the fencing cost, et cetera. I also heard Counselor Peralta asking if closing our public restrooms had any impact on our overall risk matrix, or the, or the constitutionality of the, of the system, if I frame that correctly. And, those are the, oh, and I also heard a question of, does the Safe Overnight Parking Program count towards our shelter bed count? Of course, we don't, I will just say, we don't collect data on the Safe Overnight Parking Program. Encompass Yamhill Valley has told us that it's provided thousands of nights of discreet safe overnight shelter, but, but we don't have any sort of registration system, so I'm not quite sure how that would work in, but that was still a, a request of if it can work into the overall matrix. Before I go on, and we're in our last couple minutes, I just really would like to thank- Before I go on, and we're in our last couple of minutes, I just really would like to thank, thank our city staff for doing this. It was a, it was a big lift to bring this amount of information, and in a pretty tight timeframe. And so, I just really extend my gratitude to you for, for making that effort, bringing so much forward. I'd like to thank our fire district. Also, thank you for being here and spending this time with us, and talking about these, not only complicated, but difficult's not the word. And these, these are, it doesn't matter, it's happening the nation over, it's happening right here at home. And it is disheartening, and it sometimes feels like, you know, we're taking steps forward, but feels like sometimes it's quicksand in front of us. The problem seems to grow as fast or faster as we can get our footing under us. I will say that in a lot of the conferences, and educational sessions, and workwiths I do with other cities on this, over and over and over again, the successes come when you have good partnership, and that, that partnership with our county cannot be emphasized enough, especially with the, you know, the amount of resource that they, that they have and hold, and their programming. And so, you know, I will remain hopeful that we'll continue to have support of the county in addressing these, these complex issues. As it relates back to kind of our next steps, I think that there are a couple change, potential changes to the ordinance, that the council, or to a couple ordinances that the council has heard about tonight, and certainly have heard and expressed desire to, to review some of these things. I would kind of, I don't want to not, I feel like I already have the temperature of the council on it, but I also don't want to kind of foolishly assume anything. So, I think, you know, the two things that we could bring back to review, one would be related to warming fires, and the other would be related to a school buffer zone. And so, I think just kind of a nod of, if you, you know, we'll do fire first, if you would like to continue that conversation. Yes?
I'd like to expedite both of those.
Okay.
I agree.
Agreed, and I also think we should be bringing back a discussion about changing the establishment of a camp definition.
I brought that up in our, I brought that up in the list of follow-ups that you specifically asked for, can we change established? So, without asking Council President to unmute during TSA, I think we have enough of the council wanting to go in that direction. So, yes, Council Gary?
Just on the, on the prospect of the joint school board meeting, and the school zone discussion, perhaps that, we could have draft language of the school zone, what that could be, to use as a discussion?
Did you read my notes on my computer?
No, I can't, you have this real, it's like broken.
Depending on council direction, we could have draft language for joint review, is what my notes say.
Nice. And then a request from our school district counterpart for data for that, if we can have that part for that discussion, a request from that would be an analysis on student population affected by any safe zone and change, and then any other, to their student population, as well as any other operations that they have that would be affected by the school zone in general, but also whatever specific language we were to be able to come up with to have that discussion with.
So, we haven't had the meeting with the school, we haven't had the agenda-setting meeting with the school board yet, but we've certainly expressed that we think this will be a topic. I mean, clearly, this is going to be on the agenda. I can't speak for the school board, obviously, but I'm sure that everybody wants this to be a topic of conversation, so we'll get that agenda out after our planning meeting with the superintendent. I'm not sure exactly the date. Tomorrow. My calendar would tell me that in the morning, and I would be there five minutes early. So, I think, you know, in closing, again, these are very complicated issues. I think, you know, other than being kind of risk averse, as I talked about before, you know, one of my other concerns that, is that this isn't aiming towards solutions. This is aiming towards moving the problem into other areas, and not, and that does not diminish the importance of having safety around our schools at all. It, I just, as we move forward, want people to be aware that this, it's not helping people move out of the situation. And we certainly have data that shows that our situation is just exploding, and it's terrible. It's terrible, and I hope that through our joint efforts with the community, with the school, with the county, continuing with the state, and lots of advocacy, our partnership with the fire district, I hope that we can start delivering meaningful solutions that are impactful, that affect our ability to enforce when enforcement is necessary, and that looks towards providing resources as well for those that are ready and willing and able to change their situation. It is 9:56 PM, and the meeting is adjourned.